As I'm calling to order the meeting of Board of Education, Tuesday, January 26th. Can we have a roll call?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark. Thanks. Student Board Member Malah.
Here.
Trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Davidson.
Here.
Trustee Duran.
Here.
Vice President Dos.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Here.
And Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Thank you. I will read the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I think we may only have one student board member here. Adria, if you would be willing to read the mission and vision statement, and then maybe another board member can read the norm.
Sure. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AOSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
I'll read our meeting norms. One, maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students. Four, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind, while others are allowed to express their points of view. There was no action taken in closed session tonight. And I will take questions on the agenda, or I motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I second that.
Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Student Board Member Malah.
Yes.
And tonight, we start with Vice President Dos.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Duran.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. And now we are going to have our spotlight, which is on Marin Elementary School, and I believe will be introduced by Amanda Silas, who will need to be... Let's see, can make you a panelist.
Hi. See, can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. I am Amanda Silas, and I teach second grade at Marin School. And in December, we had a publishing party. And Board Member Duran and Board Member, President Trutain, came to the publishing party on Zoom. And so I think that might be for that reason that we're part of the spotlight tonight. So it feels really exciting to be part of that. And so I actually have a little bit of student writing that I'm going to share with you. There are some students who are reading their writing on Flipgrid. And I just want to say sort of ahead of time that one of the magnificent things about this year of virtual learning is that we, as teachers, have been able to learn so much more about technology than we ever would have. Like, we probably would have taken many, many years to learn as much as we've learned this year. And I think there's a lot that we'll be able to bring back into the classroom once we're back in school. So I feel really grateful for that, including Zoom and Flipgrid, which is where you're going to see the writing that the kids have presented on tonight. And, well, actually, back in December. But, so a lot of cool things about that. So I just want to give a little shout out to the technology and Jim Gritman, who has really taken us so far as elementary school teachers through the technology. So, and then I think I am going to try to ensure my screen right now. And I just want to make sure that I think, I think I have it. And I'm going to share the sound. And then... Okay. So you'll see right here that this is actually an introduction. Oh, I'll just let you guys watch it. And then we'll have three students who are reading their writing. That's just an example from our class. All of the students did a Small Moments writing story. Small Moments writing is a personal narrative. But these three students, I've chosen to spotlight them for different reasons. And I think they're here at the, at this meeting tonight. So that's really fun, too, watching, watching themselves read it. So here we go. Hi, flaming falcons. We made it. We made it to the end of our Small Moments story unit, and I couldn't be more proud of you guys. You worked really, really hard. I just want to make sure. Can you hear the sound on that? Yes. Hard on making these stories, these stories that are about your life, these stories that are important to you. You made them so well, and I just want to celebrate you now. In this video, in this Flipgrid video, you're going to record yourself on your Small Moments story. You're going to show all the pages. You're going to read carefully. You're going to read slowly. You're going to read expressively and in your storyteller's voice, because we want to see and hear your stories that you have to tell. You know, Lizzie said something to me that really rung true and stuck with me. And I want to share it with you guys, which is she said, "The things that happen to you matter. They matter in your life, and they matter in other people's lives." And I want you to remember that. The words that you say, the words that you write, those are really important. They're important now. They're always going to be important. You are important people, and part of the way we show that is through our writing. I'm so proud of you today. I can't wait to hear your stories. Goodbye, scholars.
This is a DT.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tikiya Kailstha. I'm a DTs. I thought it was snowing. I want to build a snowman. My friend Lucky came to my house. We made a snowman together. I get the snowman set and his body made. Friend got the nose for the camera and the care for the nose. I love to build a snowman. We make a, we play snow fight. I made a big ball of snow. I throw the big ball of snow to my friend. She ran away. It landed on her. My friend said, "Ah!" It flowed all in her face. It was funny to me. She ran away. She was running. She was running. She was running to catch me. Because she was running. She ran away because, you know, the splatter was floating on her face. Then she would run away, and she was cleaning my face, and she was running to catch me. I run away. I keep running so fast like a rocket. We got tired of all that running. I keep running away. There, I was very tired of all that running. I hide back over rock. My friend saw me. I run to my mom and hide back of her. But it was stashy mom, and she was not pretty. You're disgusting. I run to my mom. She was pretty. I run to my regal mom, but not the stashy. She was pretty. I hide back of her. She go to the fake mom, then go to my mom. You find me. I run away from her. She stop running. My friend gave me a hug, and I said goodbye. Then she went home. I was sad. But the snowman was here. I was very happy. I play in the snow by myself. The end. Thank you.
This is Metzley.
Hi. I'm going to review my story today. Going to get Rosie. A picture that I draw for Rosie, by Metzley Valentina.
Can you hear that? I know it's quieter. I'm sorry. I can't turn it up any louder on my end.
Acosta. So. Okay. From Metzley. From Metzley to mom and dad. I try to hide. Mom, dad. My dad went to get my dog Rosie. His friend gave it to him and said thank you to his friend. Then he went home. He drove and drove and drove until he got home with Rosie. We were excited because he was outside parking. We were watching from the window. My dad went to the garden, and he took Rosie and sat on the bench to see Rosie play and then play, and she was so cute. The end. Okay, I did an About the Authors page. Okay. I put a picture glued in. It says, "All About the Author." I am Metzley. My people in my family are Matthias, Aron, Aaron, Aaron, Ricardo, and Elsa. I live in El Sobrante, California. I like to write stories. I like to write stories. That's all. Bye.
Three. Hey, my name is Sam, and I am a second grade student from Ms. Silas's class. This is my Small Moments story, First Day of First Grade, to Mama Who Pushed Me On D-Book by Sam Burnettti. It was Sam's first day of first grade, and Sam was happy and unhappy for no reason at all. "Sam, come on, or you'll be late for school," Daddy said. "Coming, Daddy," Sam said. Sam ran into the car, and they left. When the car pulled up, Dad and me walked through the hall. I watched other kids run to and fro to their class. We went to Room 10. When we got there to Room 10, I was happy and nervous. The teacher said hello and come in. When I got into the classroom, I stared into the classroom. The teacher said, "Go find your name." So I did. I sat right next to my name. The teacher went to the front of the room and said her name. "My name is Ms. Lichtenstein." Then she said, "Greet everyone at your table and say your name." And I said, "Hey, my name is Sam." And everyone else said their name. Then she gave us some paper and string, glue, sticks, and scissors. And she said, "Make a self-portrait." So I did. I glued and cut and made a self-portrait. At the moment, I knew I was ready for school.
Nice job.
And then here is the About the Illustrator and Author Sam. My name is Sam. I like to draw, paint, jump on the tramp, petting my cat, playing Godzilla, watching Godzilla with, and I live in Albany. I live with my sister, Sienna, my mom, and my dad. Bye.
I'm gonna hide this. Okay, that's all I have for you guys. Thank you for watching those. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. That was amazing. I'm in awe of both the storytelling and the video presence, and I think not only impressed by the teachers learning all this technology, but by the kids' creativity. Thanks a lot for sharing that with us. I'm going to give other board members a chance to respond as well.
Yeah, no, that was great. Thank you for taking the time to share. I really enjoy hearing from, from the kids. It's a good reminder as to why we do everything that we do. I also wanted to give a quick heads up that there are a few members of our audience with their hands up as well.
Yes, we will get to public comment in a few items. Yes, Trustee Duran.
Ms. Silas, great job. I was there in your classroom, and it was exciting to see the kids. And this is the finished product. And it's so exciting to see that, that lengthy story, description, complimentary art. These kids are good artists, too. And like, the president said, you know, the kids, they have this presence already in presenting. And, and those are so many skills that, you know, for second graders to be just already there, it's, it's really great. So I want to compliment you as well as the kids.
Wow, thank you. You know, I think the Flipgrid is kind of an interesting thing because it gives kids practice kind of giving a speech, you know, in a way that they don't have in the classroom. And so I do think it will be something that I'll take with me going forward. Thank you for saying that.
Well, thank you so much, Amanda, for sharing that, and Principal Full for being here. And to Trustee Duran and former President Trutain for bringing that spotlight up. It's really great for us to hear what you all are up to.
Just want to give huge kudos to Amanda and her second grade scholars. They've done a fantastic job. So, great work, Ms. Silas.
Thank you. So we will move to the consent calendar. I will take a motion to approve it or any other discussion. And if there are no questions, we can take a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
I second the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Can we get a roll call?
Student Board Member Malah.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Duran.
Yes.
Vice President Dos.
Yes.
Thank you.
The consent calendar is approved unanimously. And we now move to the superintendent and board members' reports.
I guess I'm up first with the superintendent report. And tonight, my report is going to be an update on the status of reopening in-person elementary schools. As you guys can recall, back almost a year ago, in March 13th, when we received the word to close schools, to move into remote learning, we immediately huddled up the troops, if you will. Myself, teacher union leadership, other union leadership, and our administrative staff huddled up to talk about and figure out how we can get remote learning up and running the next week. And we figured it out, and we did, because teachers were committed to making sure their kids have ongoing learning. And at that time, we were doing what we thought was expected of us and what we wanted to do for our kids and community. We didn't realize until months later is what we did was more unique than not, because many other schools in the surrounding areas didn't open up for months later. And so my hats off to our teaching staff and our leadership staff for making something so miraculously happen. And so I applaud you for that. Fast forward, we're here looking at how can we reopen in-person elementary school, and what is our current status? So I want to go to the next slide and, and start that conversation. Our current target date for elementary schools that was voted on by the board months ago is February 1st, 2020, for TK and kindergarten. And this is a phase-in approach, of course. And then the following week, February 8th, first, the second grades. And then the upper grades, third to fifth, is February 22nd, for third to fifth grades. Next slide. To be able to open schools, elementary in person, we have to adhere to three primary factors for reopening schools. First, we have to adhere to the district readiness as outlined by the county dashboard. And so we have our own dashboard with more items aligned with the county dashboard as well. And this is a criteria that you must meet 100% across the board. And it focuses on our facilities of our... And the question is simple. Are our facilities safe and ready for kids and teachers to come back to? And the short answer is yes. And as of about a week ago, we met 100% of that readiness. So as a district in our school facilities, we're 100% ready to go. And so this arduous task was taken up by our executive director and led by her, doing some tremendous work to make this happen, and that's Alexia Ritchie. So we have accomplished one of the biggest goals to moving forward and having our schools ready for in-person learning. The second primary factor is receiving a green light from the state. And the state, as you know, currently, with the current conditions and COVID rates and hospitalization, we are precluded, not allowed, to open at this time. But the, we're moving in the right direction. And so I imagine in weeks to come, we may have the green light to do so for our elementary school kids. And then the final primary factor before we open up, we must have a negotiated agreement with our labor partners, in this case, our teachers. And so those are the three primary factors that are needed in order to open and, and go into our approved plans, hybrid plans for in-person learning. Next slide. Parent-state criteria. As you know, we have a four-tier criteria, ranging from purple, the most restrictive, all the way down to the yellow, less restrictive. Red, the old criteria was that you can only open up schools when you're in the red. As of January 14th, a new framework that come out from the State Department and approved by the State and County Health Department provide guidelines on what you can do moving forward. Now you're allowed to open in the purple, but it has to be a certain kind of purple, and I'll talk about that momentarily. Next slide. Alameda County COVID-19 tier metrics is a graph of how that would look. And I'm going to have the audience and the board member take a moment to look at that. It's just looking at the criteria from another angle and a matrix that we're using. Next slide. The new plan that came out January 14th, Framework to Reopen Schools. What did the governor propose? Well, some of his proposal was included in this approved plan by county health official. Schools are allowed, as I mentioned earlier, to open in the purple tier now. But you have to adhere some specific guidelines, as spelled out below. 25 to deracial 100,000 cases for five consecutive days is the current guidelines. And as we say, things move rapidly. Right when we got used to the old guidelines, where you were precluded from opening up until you were in the red, not in the new guidelines. Next slide. What is our current case rate, data from today? January 26th, Alameda County, 29.5 cases per 100,000. California, generally speaking, much worse. So Alameda County is significantly better than California as a, as a state. Next slide. So here are some essential questions that came to me from a number of folks, and I thought it was important to put that here. Bargaining with labor partners. Hmm, here's an essential question. What, how often are we bargaining, and is there a sense of urgency? Good question. And I just thought, in full disclosure, instead of not responding, to put it on the table, here are the dates that we've most recently bargained, January 14th. And then our next bargaining date is February 3rd and February 10th. And so I wanted to not respond to the question, but wanted folks to know our bargaining dates. So there, there they are. Next slide. Family input decisions. When will families be asked to make a decision whether their students will return to in-person class or remain in distance learning? And that's a good question. Initially, we were looking at February 9th, 2021, asking parents to make a commitment. But now we're considering maybe looking at February 2nd or the 3rd. That would be communicated to our families this week, hopefully tomorrow, in a community-wide communication to both our staff and to our families. Next question, essential question. How much lead time will there be between making their decision and the reopening itself? And we guesstimated a two-to-three week turnaround. But we don't know. It can be as short as a week and a half, as long as I imagine three weeks. It really depends. Next slide. Next slide. Revisiting target dates. Will we meet our current target dates? That's a good question. The short answer is no. We would not meet our current target dates. Next Monday is February 1st. And we're not allowed to open schools in our current status of purple. And as you can see with the previous graph, we have a little ways to go. Coupled with, we don't have an agreement with our bargaining unit members. And so we wanted to put that out, that although these are our target dates, as you can see in the slide, we won't be able to make those dates because of the current conditions and the surge in cases. And the governor precluding us from opening schools is the reason, major reason why we won't make those dates, I imagine. So instead of us coming up with yet again more target dates, we decided to pivot and adhere to a criteria that we will use to determine when we open in-person schools. And we will communicate that to the families immediately. Next slide. Communication, communicating updates. There's a few things we're going to do. Number one, this week, a letter to our community this week with more details about the criteria we will use to open schools to give a better sense of when that might happen. We will be sending now, since we're forming more traction and the possibility of having in-person schooling this school year, we will commit to regular updates on the district website along with communications to families via email and also engaging in community forums, dates to be determined, so that parents have an opportunity to weigh in and ask questions to myself and to our board members about the reopening of elementary schools and our thinking behind that and listening to any possible suggestions that they may have. And I think that was, next slide. Revisiting target? And yes, I think that was the final slide that we have for tonight. And so Madam Chair, President Hinckley, that concludes the superintendent report to the board and the community regarding the status of reopening elementary schools.
Great, thank you so much. So now it's my turn to give a report. I'm just going to say one brief item, which is that last week was the PTA meeting for the high school. And one of the exciting things we talked about was what the opportunities might be for some kind of graduation and prom events. And so it's exciting to see a lot of students and parents and staff getting, putting a lot of creative energy into thinking about how we can honor our seniors in some form over the next several months. And I think goes along with a lot of the optimism people are feeling around the virus getting better and vaccinations rolling out and so forth. I do want to use the second part of my report just to remind everybody that every time we start to turn a corner, it's important for us all to remain really vigilant about all of our safety practices. And we want to keep progress toward the reopening that we're all excited to see. So that'll be my whole report for tonight. Vice President Dos?
I don't have a report. I'll just remind everybody to wear a mask.
Thank you. Trustee Duran?
Thank you. I have three items. The first, fortunately, there's been a lot of places lately to give us inspiration, finally, right? One I'd like to mention is Janet Yellen. She's our first female Treasury Secretary of the United States. And she recently said, "The pandemic has caused widespread devastation. The damage has been sweeping, and our response must be too." Here in Albany, with a vaccine now in place, our hopes for an end to this pandemic are rising. I hope that the board, along with ATA and the district office, will go forward quickly and decisively to address the needs of our students in a, quote, "sweeping" way. Yes, always in a safe manner, but in creative and expansive ways, because our children deserve no less. I also need to say a few words about our last board meeting, because so many people got thrown under the bus, from staff to board members to Albany's voting community. In my experience on the board, I had felt bullied, and now the race card has also been played. The former, I unfortunately let go, but no longer. As we say in Spanish, "ya vasta." Most importantly, because, one, we serve as role models to our student trustees. And, two, in order to be an effective board, we need to be able to respect and trust one another. Our words do matter. But as a staff member, and I talked about yesterday, we can disagree respectfully. I hope we all keep that in mind going forward. And last, land acknowledgements. Gracias and gratitude in recognition that Albany sits on the territory of the Wichenee, the ancestral and unceded land of the Chocheño Aloni. This land continues to be of great importance to the Aloni people. We recognize that all of us in Albany continue to benefit from this land that we live and work on. Consistent with Albany values of community and diversity, we have a responsibility to acknowledge and work on our relationship with the native peoples. And just one further quote from a president of a state university. "We can't go back and change the beginning, but we can start today and change the ending." Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Duran. Trustee Boyd?
Hi, everyone. For my report, I will, I guess, kind of a two-parter. First, just wanted to sort of praise and salute teachers like Ms. Silas, who are managing to keep our students engaged and captivated during the difficult time. Praise our students who are managing to keep their heads in it and try to keep their spirits up, even though this year is not looking like what they would want it to look like. And praise our parents who are trying to keep their kids motivated and engaged and try to keep some order in the home, or at least that's what we're trying to do and sort of struggling with. And that kind of leads into my second part, which is just to say that it's not easy and that there are struggles that are happening in my home. And I'm sure there are struggles happening in a lot of people's homes. And sometimes I think that we are kind of all putting on our tough faces and you're not supposed to be able to just sort of fall apart or to be having issues. And this is a really difficult time that we're all living through together. And so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that, regardless of how put-together people may seem, or even I may seem, that there are struggles happening in my life and in my home. And that I just wish for people to have strength and positivity and hopefully have people that they can turn to and talk to if they are having any sort of difficulty, because no one is strong or together all the time. And we're all doing the best that we can going through this together. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Davidson, who I will preface by saying it is her birthday, which probably wasn't part of her report. We will not subject anybody to the happy birthday song that happened earlier. But I just thought, in the spirit of knowing people are going through hard times and also celebrating things, happy birthday from all of us to you. And go ahead with your report.
Oh, I'm going to just put my report out to thank our staff and the board for the support that they are showing to so many people these days, to me as well, and to so many people in our district. And that when you reach out in Albany, people show up to support you. And if you're struggling in Albany, or you have anything going on, to kind of echo what Melissa just said, please reach out. There are a lot of people here to support everybody. And I'm also, just want to say, I'm kind of amazed by what's going on still to move our schools forward, for our students to come back, all the things that I'm seeing happening and things that are getting prepared, that we are looking forward to students being back on campuses and making them better places for our community. And I just wanted to let the public know that there's a lot still moving forward, even though we don't see it day to day, because we're not there. And that's all I have. And thank you all for the birthday wishes.
Thank you. And I will turn it over to the student board members. Member for your report?
Yeah, thank you. So my other student board member will be joining us later tonight. But I had three items to share. So the first one is that Albany High School students had their first-ever virtual midterms week last week. So this is the first week of our new semester. And to adjust to the distance learning, teachers came up with really creative ways to put on finals. So we had writing projects, oral finals, visual final projects. I know in government, I had an oral thesis defense. So there are a variety of ways to replace the traditional written exam. And then also, a virtual transitional kindergarten and kindergarten orientation night will be held on February 11th at 7:00 PM. And the orientation will cover enrolling in AUSD for TK and kindergarten and include a variety of information on that, including before and after-school care, academic expectations, preparation, and other items. And then lastly, just a reminder that the Diversifier Narrative Student Campaign is still going. And tax- deductible donations can still be made through my school bucks or by sending a check to the Student Enrollment Center or District Office. So that group of students is still working on different projects within the district. And this one specifically is to include diverse text into English classes through K through 12 in our district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So we will move to public comment, but I need to make one clarification on the consent agenda for the record. In the backup for the appointment to the new member to the Budget Advisory Committee, we didn't include the name of the appointee, although the board received that person's application and reviewed it. So I just wanted to state that the member that, we had only one application for an opening for a parent member on the Budget Advisory Committee, and we received an application from Greg Downs, who some of you may know as the former chair of the Social and Economic Justice Commission. And I want, we just need to make his name part of the public record as being the appointee for that opening. And so we will move to comments from people to address matters not on the agenda. And you have two minutes. And we will start with Cholanka Nickerman.
Apologies, I've never done this before. I apologize. Thank you for taking, listening to me. I have a hopefully short statement that I'd like to read. Superintendent Wells, board members, I'm here today to beg you to open our elementary schools for our littlest learners. Please don't send any more surveys or tell us it can't open until it's, it can't open when it's safe or that we are working on a plan. None of these things mean anything anymore, because it has been over nine months, and many other schools have opened and ours has not. I know that this is a tough problem. I know everyone has the best intentions. But from my perspective, our school's most important stakeholders should be the kids the school serve. COVID is not the only risk we need to balance. There's huge mental health and education risks, all of which directly affect our kids' physical health as well. I have a few questions for you that I hope one day you will answer. Does Albany want to reopen elementary schools? As a parent of little children, it feels like Albany does not want to open schools. The district wants to look like it's opening schools. I am blunt, because this is how I feel as a parent. Two, what are the conditions under which Marin Elementary School will open? I have scoured the website, read everything I can find, and yet I have no idea what the explicit enforceable criteria are for reopening. I don't mean the minimum criteria, but the complete set of criteria that if met would ensure immediate reopening. Where are the goalposts? If we have criteria for when we must close, we need specific criteria for when we must open as well. What is the scientific explanation for keeping schools closed? Study after study shows that the evidence is overwhelming, that little children are not significant contributors to the spread, and that opening elementary schools does not significantly contribute to spreading COVID-19. My four-year-old school has been open since August without a single known case. Elementary schools all over California have been open for months, some since September. Number four, why can't we separate the topic of opening elementary schools from the topic of opening middle and high schools? Why are five-year-olds held to the same standard as 17-year-olds? And finally, I have heard rumors that schools won't open fully until kids are vaccinated. If true, this concept must be rejected immediately as a red herring. The major vaccines haven't even started trials on elementary school kids. This requirement could keep schools closed until fall 2022. When teachers are vaccinated and staff, teachers and staff are vaccinated in Phase 1B Tier 1, which has already started, schools must reopen in full. Will this school district commit right now that we will go back to normal instruction when all teachers and staff are vaccinated? Many elementary schools in the Bay Area are safely open and have been for months. Why aren't we? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll take comment from Jeremiah Pinguilo.
Hi, good evening. Hope everybody's well. I did just hear that public comment, and those are all very good points of interest. You know, maybe there's a solution. I mean, the parents that want their kids to go run around on the playground and play tag, you know, and get all real close. You know, maybe some parents, you know, they could have school, they could go back to school. But there's a lot of parents that don't want their kids to go back to school and be with other kids and get the flu or the virus. So since I've noticed Zoom has been kind of the new norm for a public school, maybe it's a good option to have both. You know, like you can have core classes, you could have Schedule A and Schedule B. And you got these kids that want to go back to physical school and play on the playground and play tag, risk dying or being carriers and bringing it home to the parents, risk people dying from a virus, debt, you know? But then you can have also this new norm on Zoom to where you can also have classes towards also on Zoom. That way, it's just not one or the other. You have, you're going to, you don't want to force people to go back to school if they don't want to either, you know? It's become kind of a new norm. That'd be the only thing I could do for that. And boy, two minutes sure goes fast. I would raise it to three minutes, future agenda item, because it encourages more public speaking. Two minutes is kind of short. I did post the agenda for this meeting at the kiosk on Solano and Curtis. So if you look in the kiosk, it's inside there, the whole agenda, it's eight pages. But I'm trying to make it known for the public, any public location. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll take comment from Stephen Naif.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I have a short ATA statement. Dear Members of the Board, Superintendent, and Albany Community, as we move towards the end of January, there are many reasons to be hopeful. The inauguration provided uplifting messages of America that we sorely miss, messages of peace, unity, truth, and a commitment to confronting forces of hatred and injustice. While the hard work is clearly ahead of us, there is hope. Along with the new administration comes a more science-based approach to a vaccination plan. We are not where we want to be in the number of vaccinations completed, but the process has started, provides hope for the time when enough people are vaccinated to allow for larger gatherings. And while our current COVID metrics are still way above the widespread tier and new variants are raising alarm, our overall trend looks promising, giving hope that by following county guidelines, we can move into a less dangerous tier. Teachers, by nature, are full of hope. From the simple hope that a new lesson won't bomb, to the universal hope of equality for all. We put our heart and hopes into our teaching every day, providing thoughtful, engaging lessons, virtual field trips, publishing parties, one-on-one and small group support meetings. one-on-one and small group support meetings, and yes, even semester finals. One of our biggest hopes that we can one day return to school safely. There's still a lot to do, but we are hopeful. It may be all too obvious, but it bears highlighting that the only way that these hopes become realities is by working together from the national to the local level, from state to school. Our hope is that we can all work together for what is best for our country, our community, and our children. Thank you. Sincerely, Stephen Neif and Chris Knight, ATA co-presidents.
Thank you. And our last comment from Debbie Rosenfeld-Cupar.
Hi, I just wanted to speak up on behalf of, as a parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler. I just feel like, you know, most of the attention is being placed on the elementary schools reopening. And I just would like to, you know, feel like the middle school and high schools, you know, seem, you know, a little more equally weighted. I mean, I understand that there's different risks, but you know, concerned about mental health in particular for our middle schoolers and our high schoolers. We saw the Las Vegas School District deciding to reopen because of some severe, you know, issues, suicide going on there. And, and you know, once the conditions are met that our schools are deemed, you know, ready to open for the elementary schools, I'm curious how far behind that puts the middle school and the high school, like why, why it has to be, you know, starting with TK in kindergarten and, and then eventually working its way up to middle school and high school. If it's safe to open, when it seems safe for our lower school grades to return, I would hope that a plan is in place for our middle schoolers and high schoolers to return shortly thereafter or on a similar timeframe. Thank you.
I just want to make a clarification in response to that last comment. So at our next agenda meeting, we will be hearing reopening plans for the middle school and high school. I will note that the state standards for reopening are different for different age levels. So just factual clarifications that might explain a couple of things. So that being the end of public comment, we will move to item 12 on the agenda, Staff Report on the Hubs. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Hankley. For our staff report, we have updates on our hubs. And I'm going to turn, hand this over to our Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams, who would be joined by our Executive Director, Alexia Ritchie.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Wells. Julie, if you could just go to the PowerPoint slides, that'd be great. Thank you. Very much. And so as Dr. Wells said, tonight, we have an update on the status of hubs, both mental health hubs and also elementary internet support hubs. So I am actually going to turn this over to our Executive Director, Alexia Ritchie, who is going to get us started off. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Williams and board members in our community joining us today. We'd like to give you an update on current hubs and our goals to open a few specialized hubs in the next couple of weeks. And so Julie, if you can take us to the next slide, I'll start us out with some background information in terms of public health and safety guidelines that we do need to adhere to when we're opening up small groups. Again, these are called hubs. And so my source is Alameda County Schools Reopening Guidance. So which students can be served in these specialized hubs? Student groups of all grades in the state guidance does cite students in special education or English language learners and student groups of high needs as examples. Now what services can be offered in these hubs? Well, we can have in-person child supervision and limited instruction. We can target our support services and we can facilitate the distance learning for specific subsets of children and youth. Specialized services may include, but not limited to occupational therapy, speech and language services, other medical services, behavioral services, and educational supports as part of a target intervention strategy or even assessments. And let's talk about the maximum size of the groups participating in programming. Again, these cohorts or these hubs must be limited to no more than sixteen participants total. The maximum cohort size applies to all children and youth in the cohort, even when all students are not participating at the same time, meaning you want to try to keep cohort stability as valid as possible. Therefore, if you define and identify sixteen participants in that cohort, you need to maintain that same number of students. You cannot introduce new students. There are some regulations, but right now we would like to maintain cohort stability. And in-person participants may not exceed twenty-five percent of the school building's capacity. That can be different, of course, depending on the size of your school building. And all health and safety protocols, all guidance regarding the physical distancing, face coverings, health screenings would apply to schools that are offering these services to small groups of students in hubs. So again, those are the reopening guidance protocols that we need to follow when we're programming and when we are hosting hubs. Next slide, please. Currently, we actually do have some hubs that are in person. We've talked a little bit about this, but again, the preschool has been open for a couple of months now. And we have hubs where students meet twice a week. They are either in a Monday, Tuesday hub or they are in a Thursday, Friday hub. Wednesday is reserved for a deeper cleaning of the campus. We also have been performing assessments specifically with special education students. Those are being conducted by outside contractors. Nice to see that our Albany High School Choir Hub, with the guidance of Alameda County Public Health Department, was able to bring some students back for small, again, specialized hubs with the choir. We've had some luck organizing some one-on-one intervention services. However, those were conducted with outside service providers and not Albany staff. And finally, there already has been some limited internet access hubs at Albany High School. We appreciate the efforts of Albany High School to reach out to those students who would benefit from being onsite and accessing the internet. Next slide, please. I took the lead on thinking about some of the new hubs specifically designed to support mental health students, excuse me, students with mental health services. So when talking with the staff, we do have mental health coordinators who cover elementary through high school. I'd like to thank Rachel Gordon, Susan Collins, Will Casin, Joanne Wild, and all of those who helped me put together some of the talking points here. When and if we're ready to open up some mental health hubs, we will require enough room space to accommodate the physical distancing and of course, the health protocols at each site. Those were mentioned in the slide before. In fact, the use of outside spaces will be used to the greatest extent possible. Sorry, let me add Shelley Ball to that list. That was the last person in my group. Potential staff does include our current mental health coordinators, the ones I just mentioned, as well as our mental health interns. We do use a number of interns at each level each year to offer services. Some of the supplies for elementary students, for example, if we were to offer play therapy equipment, we would need to allow for the minimized use of shared items. Therefore, additional items might need to be purchased in order to support mental health hubs specifically at the elementary school. We do need parent and student consent to adhere to all of the health and safety requirements and to participate with in-person services. Again, this will be a requirement. That parent guarantee and that student guarantee will be necessary, of course, to make sure that all people stay safe. And our coordinators report, and actually this is an interesting detail, that during this extended period of remote learning, and this is an important idea to maintain, that there are students who have actually thrived with the remote model and would prefer to continue meeting with their service provider online. So to summarize, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We would need to be very specific and targeted in terms of who we would bring back for in-person mental health services. And finally, our next step to develop these mental health hubs would be to identify target dates to begin first with one-to-one counseling services. To identify those staff members who will be providing those in-person and counseling services and an outreach effort to parents and students to identify those who would benefit from, and again, be comfortable with returning to an in-person mental health hub. I think that's now the end of my presentation and Assistant Superintendent Williams will discuss internet hubs.
Thank you very much. Julie, we can go to the next slide. Thank you very much. So I've been working with our elementary principals at Cornell, Marin, and Ocean View Elementary Schools to think about how we might offer support to some of our elementary students in the form of an internet/support hub. So our current thinking at this time is that we would offer three hubs, one at Cornell, one at Marin, and one at Ocean View. In our conversation about students that we would serve, we talked obviously about wanting to be able to serve sort of the broad needs of students, but recognizing that, you know, we can only sort of serve a fraction of the student population. Certainly, as we think about who might best be served, we talked about our students, and you saw this on the slide earlier, our students who are identified as English learners, our students who receive resource services through their IEPs, and our students who otherwise participate in intervention. Our current thinking at this time is that we would seek to serve students in grades one through five. Our TK and kindergarten students have a slightly different schedule that might sort of make it difficult for them to participate. And also just in our initial conversation about sort of how we might provide the maximum amount of service, we talked about maybe some of the different needs of our youngest learners that might, might not be able to be served so efficiently in a hub setting. Our planning at this time would include providing the support on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. On Wednesday, of course, all of our, most of our elementary students participate in a mainly asynchronous day. This would also allow for some cleaning of the sites, even though we're not switching out cohorts. It would be the same group of students that would participate on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And our goal would be to provide the service to students while they are receiving their morning remote Zoom instructions. So you see the hours here are approximately 9:00 AM to noon. We know that different teachers at different grade levels have slightly different schedules. And so that's sort of where we talk about staffing and ensuring that there's adequate staffing so that as breaks come up at different times, students can be released for recess. But at least sort of the general idea is that we would provide the service to students in the morning. I do know that our elementary sites already are working on plans and/or have already implemented remote tutoring and additional intervention support for students in the afternoon. Our thinking is that we would use, certainly for Cornell and Marin, the largest spaces that are available on their campuses. And those are their multi-use rooms. And so we would be thinking about accommodating sixteen or so students. And Executive Director Ritchie reminded us yesterday that as we're thinking about cohort size, we also want to be thinking about the adults that are in that cohort. And so our current thinking right now is around sixteen students. And I think our plan probably would be, and I'll talk a little bit about student selection, our plan might be to maybe identify potentially more students than that sixteen in the likely event, maybe that some students declined our invitation and/or were not able to participate with us. We talked about providing breakfast and lunch. Those would be sort of grab and go style. And so if students entered the campus, breakfast could be provided to them. They could eat that outside in, in the courtyard. And then at the end of the internet session, they could be given a grab lunch to go home with so that then we could provide them food in the morning and then in the afternoon. Our thinking about staffing right now, and we're working with our Human Resources Department, is to reach out to our, some of our classified staff who were previously on our layoff list. We won't be recruiting staff who are currently in assignments, obviously. Teachers are teaching and other staff are providing services. So our thought at this time is that we would be reaching out to staff, classified staff, who are not currently in an assignment that we could retain to provide supervision for our, for our hubs. Student selection was a lot of conversation because I think when you think about the range of needs and the number of students that might well be served, we recognize that while at the one hand, we want to maintain flexibility in order to be able to serve as many students as possible, we also do want to have some sort of criteria so that we can sort of be checking ourselves and making sure that to the maximum extent possible, we're sort of offering this service equitively. So some of the different criteria we have been talking about with principals are students who have poor attendance or poor work completion and/or students who are struggling academically and/or students who are referred by their teachers. So our, our sites and our principals are already working on identifying students about whom they have concern. And so we will just be working to hone those lists of students as we think about who would be invited to participate in the hubs. And then just our final next steps would include preparing the physical space at each of the sites. And then our hope and high dream is to launch in mid-February. So that is it for the update. The rest of this time would be reserved for board discussion and/or questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Board. Want to start with questions, comments?
My raised hand is still not working, but I would like to ask a couple of questions.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't have these questions when I spoke with you all yesterday, but they're changed now as we're talking about moving up our hybrid opening dates. And I just want to think through the impact of that on hubs. So if we're using our multipurpose room, that makes sense. The space would be made available and there wouldn't be crossover taking away from a classroom space. But would these students then not be able to participate in the afternoon live instruction with their class if they're also part of one of these hubs? And then do we need to do any cleaning of the space where that group is in there?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. I think sort of timing is everything, right? As we think about launching these hubs and then also think about returning students to hybrid, I think sort of maybe the simplest answer I would give is that this hub service would be provided in the morning. So then there would be no barrier or impediment to students being able to participate with their class in the afternoon. I think maybe sort of you're thinking about if they are mixing in with a cohort and then participating in another cohort, that might be a consideration we would have to think through. But I think, I think we could think through how to make, make that work.
Trustee Duran, maybe the hand raising will have to be manual.
Yeah, because I can't do mine either. I just had a clarification, Assistant Superintendent, when you said mid-February, was this simply for the, for the internet hubs or was this for all the hubs? Is the aspirational date for mid-February for everybody?
I was just speaking about the internet support hubs as the aspirational mid-February launch date. I think Executive Director Ritchie is implementing her hubs in a slightly different fashion than the internet hubs. I think sort of more a one-to-one sort of rollout where we would be really trying to launch sort of these hubs with all of the students beginning mid-February, but I'll defer to Executive Director Ritchie.
You're right on target, Assistant Superintendent Williams and Trustee Duran, you're absolutely right. We're thinking of starting with that outreach, a one-to-one counseling pivot from online services to in-person services then would be conducted. And in fact, I'm pleased to report that the principal of Marin and I were just working today on the possibility of opening up one of our first mental health hubs at Marin School with a particular student we've identified. And so as soon as those students and family members are identified and agree to the outlined safety and health precautions, I believe we'd be ready to go.
Okay, I have one other question, which actually I had asked previously and staff had responded. However, parents might be interested in knowing better details because when you talk about sixteen to twenty students per site with space permitting, if parents find out or, or they really want their children to be in, in a hub and, and you've already reached sort of the max- and you've already reached sort of the maximum, sixteen to twenty kids on site don't sound like a lot. That, you know, could they be expanded then to two cohorts or three cohorts? But I got an explanation which I would appreciate if you would sort of share out with the parents regarding space permitting.
Yes, absolutely. And so when we're thinking about space permitting, we're thinking about open spaces on campus that number one could accommodate students, a good number of students, the sixteen students. But we're also not considering using classrooms because many of our teachers are teaching from their classrooms. And as I said yesterday, for many teachers and for many students, that's a really important feature of the teaching is that it's happening in the classroom and that, you know, students are sort of getting a sense of routine and that teachers are also sort of having a feeling of familiarity being in their rooms and being able to sort of reach for things. So we're not planning to fill all of the empty classrooms because they're empty, because really they're not. Our teachers are using them. But also, you know, even if we were to sort of think about expanding, as was indicated on that first slide, I believe Executive Director Ritchie said up to a quarter of the school population. So we certainly, even if all of those spaces were available, couldn't use them. So we're thinking just about, you know, targeting. And I know that the need expands maybe beyond the number of students that we've identified. But, you know, we're following the hub guidelines, which speaks about sixteen students. And so that's where we would begin. And I think that, you know, as these other conversations have been happening this evening about how things are sort of moving in the right direction and that maybe we're sort of turning a corner and might be able to be preparing to launch hybrid instruction, that, you know, hopefully sooner rather than later, we'll be able to bring our students back in some hybrid format. And so this is, this is just a measure to support our needy students just for the meantime, while we are making our final preparations to bring all of our students back. But just to reiterate, yeah, we're not planning to use every single classroom because our classrooms are, many classrooms are being used by our teachers.
Yeah, Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if there's been thinking around making the Internet hub sort of model available at the middle school and/or the high school? And what, if there has been thinking about that, you know, what the thought process is and how that might move forward? It seems as if the sort of selection criteria that are being used at the elementary school could also be applied to the older students. And perhaps some students and families would appreciate that option also.
Yeah, I would certainly say that we have not shut ourselves off from that possibility. I think maybe we're sort of starting with elementary to see how it works. Can we get the staffing? Can we get it to be sort of a model that's effective and that works for students? And I think, you know, we can learn a lot if we can get this model to work with our youngest students that would conceivably sort of need the most support, then one might be able to sort of scale that to include middle school students. We do know that our high school students who, you know, you know, some of them are already accessing the campus and using the Internet. So some of that is sort of happening organically. But I think to answer your question, we want to see how we do with our elementary hubs. And then if we find that we can then scale it up, I think we're open potentially to the possibility of being able to do that for our middle school students.
Thanks. I have some questions that I wanted to give. Vice President Doss, do you want to ask anything? Or do you mind if I? Go ahead.
Go for it.
So I wanted to ask two questions about sort of what we tried and then what we're thinking about in the future. So one is if you could summarize, I think we've heard some, but especially for the public, what the rollout has been or the effort to try to do special education hubs, since that's what we originally were going to prioritize. So I'd like to hear just more about what was tried and why that doesn't seem to be part of the core plan for hubs going forward. And maybe the same question about whether this is something that's been considered for English language learners or other, or if there's sort of part of the group that would be identified for those elementary hubs in general. Yeah, so I'll just ask that one first and I'll ask my other question after.
Well, I'll answer the second question because it referenced English learners. And then I'll defer to special education to answer the first question. So the hubs, as we're thinking about them, would include our students identified as English learners and would include students who are receiving resource services through special education. And so for the question about what we've already done, I will defer to special.
Thank you. I wanted to reiterate that our resource students are going to be part of the hubs that are opening at the elementary school. And currently I'm looking into staffing for our special day class students. And that would be hopefully not just elementary, but also middle school and high school. What the thrust is right now is finding the appropriate place that would accommodate the needs of our unique students and in the special day class.
Great, thank you. Trustee Duran.
Yes, Dr. Artis Frun, could you just clarify that a little bit in terms of the space? Because I understand what the Assistant Superintendent said with teachers in the classrooms. But in this case specifically, if some of those classrooms for the special day are really appropriate for those kids, are you still looking for, why can we not have the kids be in those familiar classrooms?
That is the intention for the students to be in the familiar classrooms. We need to coordinate with the hubs that would be the larger hubs, how both groups of students being on the same campus would work in the healthiest way possible. So my hope is that it would remain in the classroom that the students have been familiar with and would accommodate them in the best way.
Thank you. So it sounds like from all of these, part of the challenge is staffing. So I don't know if someone can speak to what the sort of realistic expectation is for being able to get staff either for the elementary hubs or for the special day class hubs. I know this isn't an easy question, but I think it's good for us to have a sort of realistic sense of what some of those hurdles are.
Let me just add that, Madam President, Hinkley, that we identified a number of staff and looking for a couple more. So we're very confident we can move forward with this unlike before. So we're excited about the possibilities, but we're very confident.
Any other board members have questions? Yeah, Trustee Davidson.
I asked this before and I thought also the public might want to know this. I had asked about how the HVAC system at some of our sites might impact the hubs. And I was reassured that we have spaces that are ready to be used that do meet the air safety standards. And we can bring the hubs back in those spaces. And then more will be updated on that later.
And that is 100% correct.
So I have just one more question, which is where do you see, what would be the sort of priorities for rolling out additional types? I feel like we're using the word hubs pretty broadly to mean both extracurricular activities and one-on-one things, as well as the sort of more traditional idea of cohorts coming in for some group activity tied to school. How do you see us being able to roll out more group-focused activities, particularly at the middle and high school where it may take longer for kids to come back in person? And I think a lot of the need is both around instruction, but also around opportunities for kids to see each other and to staff person. So how do you see that, you know, maybe this is more music? Maybe it's just more counseling groups, which we found successful. Maybe it's more athletics. But how do you see the sort of rollout of this over the next couple of months after you get through this initial exercise?
I'd like to respond also and give some credit to my mental health team, who also considered providing a continuum of support services, which included individual coping skills, those skills related to social emotional learning, some small social skills groups, some family counseling, offering tips to reduce stress. And in particular, then the assimilation back to either a hybrid or an in-person model, recognizing that some students might have some difficulties with those transitions. And so I appreciate them thinking about how to expand that to a more group dynamic setting.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have one question. If parents want to participate in in-person mental health services, how do they sign up? Or how do they reach out? Thank you.
I'm assuming if students, because the mental health services are for our students, for parents who want to participate in mental health.
I'm sorry. Let me, I apologize for not clarifying. How do parents who would like to advocate on behalf of their children reach out for mental health services to be provided for their children? My apologies for not providing clarification.
No, no problem. Thank you, Trustee Doss. I'm going to pass this over to Executive Director Alexia Ritchie.
Certainly. We've been fortunate to have a consistent policy when it comes to mental health referrals. And your site's principal would have a lot of information in terms of how to make that referral. On behalf of your student, teachers can also make referrals on behalf of their students. But again, your site principal will give you some guidance in terms of how to make that formal referral.
Thank you. So we do have one public comment on this item. Jeremiah Pinguelo. And somebody will have the timer. I don't have the power to allow, oh yes, I do, allow to talk.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, so regarding the mental health hubs. You know, hey, Ms. Ritchie, do you remember the old McGregor behind Cougar Field, behind the locker room?
Yes, I do.
I'm not sure what we're using that building for, if those portables or even exist anymore. But maybe that's another location to do things. Just want to throw that out there. Also, you know, since the first and second graders are over there at the indoor, at the old new McGregor, I don't know how to say it anymore. But then, you know, you've got the outdoor elementary school, you know, three, third grade to fifth grade. The outdoors over by the pool at the high school. I guess are those two different hubs? I just, I just don't know where these hubs are. Also, I was going to suggest that the Memorial Building. I don't know if the Memorial Building is a good spot, you know, to have a big open area to where the doors could stay open and there's air circulating. Or maybe we could talk to Albany Twin, the movie theater, to where if they're not using the movie theater right there on Cane's and Solano, maybe we can have classes or indoor classes or some sort of, you know, hubs for mental health or some sort of. Maybe we could utilize the Albany, you know, theater or something. I mean, it'd be great just to utilize all these resources we have, the Memorial Building. I know it's technically not the Unified School District's property, but maybe the city will cooperate. I mean, the city's got to throw a bone somewhere, you know, and help out the school district. But yeah, I just want to give props for, you know, Jingle Jeff. He's back today. You know, he was out for six weeks on his surgery, but maybe Jingle Jeff could help out in mental health.
Thank you. We do actually have a second public comment. Amy Appel.
Hi, thanks, everyone. I just want to give voice to this idea that this is not a very robust plan for delivering in-person services to students who need them. And I'm really disappointed. I think it shows a lack of imagination and commitment to these students. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Appel. I think one of the things that's been a little bit challenging to follow as someone who's also in the special education advisory group is the balancing of offering services and then parents maybe not being interested and then figuring out how to offer them to other people, which is why I asked that question about the sort of history of trying to roll out some support for special education. I do think it would be helpful for the board to continue to get updates about what we've been offering special education families and whether there seems to be a disconnect between what's being offered and what families actually would like to see. I know that's a challenging, a challenging set of issues to weigh. But I think the board often feel, you know, we're, we hear things from parents and then we hear that we're making efforts to try to build these programs up. So it would be helpful, I think, to get another update for the board soon as you're, you know, as you continue to make progress to being able to offer more of these services to our special education families. Yeah, Trustee Boyd.
Thank you, President Hinkley. I just wanted to, of course, my children start yelling, wanted to encourage Dr. Wells and his staff to, and working with the principals as well at the middle school and high school to think about and perhaps start the planning for. I understand the desire to kind of see how the first rollout goes with the younger students. But especially as I think someone had pointed out, since the older students are sort of later in the schedule as far as when they could even potentially be up for returning in a hybrid way. It would seem like some of the planning that often takes a lot of time, identifying the students who might participate, identifying potential certified staff who might be able to to be in charge of these Internet hubs, that some of that sort of planning and thinking could happen now so that whatever lessons are learned based on the rollout with the younger students, that those lessons could be applied to information that's already been gathered so that there isn't as much of a delay in hopefully being able to provide something like those Internet hubs to middle school and high school students. And also, as I believe President Hinkley had mentioned before, asking about different types of activities, whether it's athletic or artistic, et cetera, that might be provided. Just want to make sure that the older students whose needs may be different, but perhaps not any less urgent, are also being considered and planned for in the best way we can. Thank you.
Yeah, Trustee Duran.
I just wanted to sort of support what Trustee Boyd was saying and also just a friendly reminder to the superintendent and to the district staff that with what Janet Yellen said, which is the pandemic has caused great damage. And it would be wonderful to see us really address the needs of our students in a sweeping way. That means, you know, I mean, you know what that means. Let's open our minds to possibilities, the possibilities we haven't even thought of yet. But, but if we could, you know, really try to be creative. I, you know, I know you're all working hard. It's not meant as a criticism. It's meant to just try to get us all, all of us to start being more open to, to so many kinds of possibilities. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing done, we will conclude this staff report. We can talk at the end of the meeting about future agenda items related to this. So we will move to our first review and action item, which is the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report on Bond Measures, which I believe CBO Kim will be presenting.
Yes, I will hand this over to our Chief Business Official and Officer, CBO Jackie Kim.
Thank you, Superintendent Wears. CBOC, our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee meets four times a year, and this is the annual report. The latest audit we have is for 2018-19. So they are going to present 2018-19 annual report. And Dennis Keller, the President of CBOC, is here this evening to present the report. Let's see. We should see him. There he is.
All right, how's that coming now? Can you all hear me?
We see and hear you.
All right, thank you. All right, I think Jackie's going to screen share. I'll walk it, I'll walk us through it. So thanks for the intro. So I'm representing the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. You all have some hot topics on the agenda tonight, so I want to ensure you have plenty of time to spend on that. So we'll make this short and sweet. This is the Citizens Bonds Oversight Committee 2018-2019 Annual Report. As Jackie mentioned, the key with this report is that it's based on the audited, excuse me, information that can't, that you all or some of you all in the previous school board approved, I want to say late spring of last year. So this is not a snapshot of what finances look like now. Jackie has that. This is a little bit delayed. So why is this report a thing? It's one of the requirements of the CBOC. So let's back up. What is the CBOC? It's a group of citizens that get together three times a year or more. We try to do four, to receive construction updates. And it's like Jackie's working on the share.
Sorry, can you see the screen now?
No, we can, we can see that you're trying to share it.
Sorry about that. Let's see what I guess is.
Do you want me to try, Jackie?
Sure, sorry. I have it open there. Okay, you are sharing. Okay, perfect.
Is it just PDF?
Yes.
Okay, you can see it.
It's the introduction. Yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so essentially, this group, we receive construction updates. We review expenditures and ensure that all funds are being used in support of the projects as it's, as they're defined in the bond measures. So making sure they're, in this case, that they're being used for construction and related activities and not for operating expenses, teacher salaries, those types of things. As part of that, the CBOC is required to file an annual report. As it turns out, this is the first one, I think, since this CBOC has been around since 2017. So we're playing a little bit of catch-up here. But no big deal. Let's, we'll run through the report really quickly. I'll answer questions and, and we'll, we'll get on with things. So that was the introduction. The committee structure is made up of these good folks. And we have two openings, which I'll talk about in a second. So Gary Klass, myself, Theo Lou, Howard McNinni, Stephen Watkins and Barbara Weiselman are, are on it now. We've had a number of folks in the past who have joined us, including Melange Matthews and Jackie Kim herself, Cat Bliss, Matt Smith and Perrine Shaw. We are looking for folks, two roles. They have to be of these types, which are active in a business organization or part of a taxpayer's organization. So if anyone's interested, please send your information along to Jackie and come join us. All right, so the measures, what are we tracking? We are tracking currently three measures. Measure E from 2008, that is the school bond measure, which is, we'll talk about a little bit more. I hope you all have had a chance to go enjoy the pool. I thank this bond every time I go for a swim. It's really fantastic. This was a $10 million bond that has now been fully issued and is just about depleted. So hopefully, this is the last time we reference this bond as it's just about wrapped up. Second one is Measure B 2016. So this is a $70 million bond. Two series have been issued. I understand the third is, is going to be issued fairly soon. This is in support of all the construction activities that are, are ongoing. As part of this, we note interest income, projected interest, interest income when this, by the time this bond wraps up, about $2.1 million. Jackie can comment more on that, that source. And then Measure E is the final one, which is a $25 million bond. Again, two series have been issued and the third will be issued shortly in support of Ocean View and Marin. The next section is on expenditures. And essentially, this is just a review of what these things, what these bonds are supposed to be spent on. Measure E is clear, it's the pool, just about done. Measure B is specifically for the build-out of the new schools. And Measure E is the build plus other related activities. Some details here about what the expenditure amounts were for each measure. I'm not going to read through these. It's, it's kind of dull. But as a part of this, just know that each time the committee meets, we review essentially every single expenditure and ask questions and confirm that they are, that the money's being used for what it should be used for. At this point, the district has done a great job remaining within those constraints. And that, that says a lot about how this district operates. We have questions, we're always able to get answers. It's, it's quite well done. The last section is on the audit. So just kind of referencing that audit, that we, we rely a lot on that audit to, to get the information that we need and to ensure things are being done well. As you all know, the audit last year was, was, came, came across with a clean opinion. And that is, you know, it just proves that hiring super competent people makes everyone's lives easier. Jackie's done a great job with this. As I mentioned, we review each expenditure during our meetings and we have no grievances with things up to this point. So we give a thumbs up on this, on this report for this fiscal year. I understand the next audit is coming in the spring. And we will, hopefully, we'll be able to turn this one out around faster than, than last time. And we'll do it in late spring, early summer. We'll see about that. That is all I have for you. I'm sure Jackie will post this where everyone can get to it and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you so much. We really appreciate that you are reviewing all of these numbers because we are the ones that spend it and want to make sure that someone's keeping an eye on us. Are there any questions about the report? Yeah, Trustee Doron.
Just two things. One, I wanted to know if you've tried, if you've talked to the local Chamber of Commerce to see if by any chance there might be a business person there that might be interested in sitting on the board?
I have not. Jackie, have you reached out? I'm pretty sure you have. No? Okay.
And, and just the second thing is, is appreciate everything you said, Mr. Keller. And maybe we could just give another shout out to, to Ms. Kim for her fantastic accounting, right? That keeps us clean and legal and, and makes the community happy.
I agree with that.
Yes, for sure. That is not a given in a, in a school district. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Great. And I think we've almost always had that position filled of the business community. It's the other position that we have not had anybody fill for many, many years, the, the representative from a taxpayer, a bona fide taxpayer organization. So hopefully, we can get the, the business representative slot filled soon.
And President Hinckley, just one last thing. I'm sorry, I forgot. And a shout out, of course, to Mr. Keller and all the committee members who take their time to, to support the, the district and ensuring that we're doing what's right for our community. So thank you too for all your time and efforts.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So we can take more board questions or we can take a motion? This is a report that the board has to accept, vote to approve the report.
I move that we approve the report.
I second.
Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
And Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Duran?
Yes.
Vice President Dos?
Yeah.
President Hinckley?
Yes. So the report is approved unanimously. And thank you again for your service on the glamorous Bond Oversight Committee, Mr. Keller. And we will move to item 13-2, also under Review and Action, which is Resolution Number 2020-2113, Resolution to Determine Tie-Breaking Criteria for Certificated Employees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, presenting the resolution would be our Chief Human Resource Officer. And that would be Marina Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I, um, tonight, I'm bringing this resolution to approve the tie-breaking criteria for certificated employees. And what that means is that annually, the district is required to approve the tie-breaking criteria so that it is in place in the event that a certificate, a certificated layoff were to occur. Now, I want to pause here because that sounds a little scary and it can cause folks to sort of be unsettled and on alert. This is in no way intended to, to hint that there's a layoff coming. This is something that we bring annually and we're required to do so under the ed code. And so we did have an inquiry today about this item, specifically surrounding whether, whether this was sort of alluding to things to come. And, and the answer is no. This is just an annual, a routine item that we bring. Julie, if we can bring up the resolution. Thank you. So again, the resolution just cites the ed code and the need to pass this criteria or to determine this criteria each year. I will say that the criteria that you see here, this is what the board approved last year. So I just, I brought it back exactly as is. And so what you'll see is that in the event there is a tie between two certificated employees, we use a point system to break the tie and an employee would be granted, you know, one half or one or two points for, for particular types of credentials that would be over and above what they already have. So we can scroll down a little bit more. So there may, there, at least last year, what the board decided was to also include additional points for additional degrees that are beyond an employee's bachelor's level degree. And that's pretty much the purpose of this item. Does anyone have any questions?
Since we don't have the raising hands, you guys will have to jump in. I can't see everybody. So any questions or? If not, we can take a motion. There is no, no one waiting to comment on this item.
I move that we approve Resolution 2020-2113, the tie-breaking criteria for certificated employees.
I'll second that.
Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
And we start with Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Duran?
Yes.
Vice President Dos?
Yes.
President Hinckley?
Yes.
And Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
So the resolution is passed unanimously and we move to item 13-3, Master Contracts Between Albany Unified School Districts and Three Chords Inc.
And this will be passed on to Dr. Cynthia Ortiz-Frant, our Special Ed Director.
Thank you to all. This is a master contract between Albany Unified School District and Three Chords Incorporated, otherwise known or DBA Therapy Travelers. And we are looking to bring an in-person occupational therapist to do evaluations in order to help us be compliant with our assessments. And we have identified a person who has excellent skills and is local and has worked extensively with preschool up and up through adult students. So the person that was identified was a person that was a very difficult person to find in the sea of OTs and she will be in person. She will be collaborating with our two OTs who are providing virtual therapy. She will be doing assessment only. And so the request is for the assessments to be conducted in person because a lot of the OT assessment cannot be done virtually like other types of assessment can be done. Anyone have any questions about that?
Thank you for bringing this and it's exciting to. Thank you for bringing this and it's exciting to be moving forward on those assessments. You know, this is something board members have been asking about. Any questions for Dr. Ortiz-Frank or a motion to approve this contract?
Ms., President Hinckley, there is one participant.
Yes, we have one public commenter, Jeremiah Pinguolo. You might be muted.
Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, I would approve it too. I just want to throw one thing out there as a, another resource. I know it's really expensive to hire therapists and, you know, five thousand dollars here, two thousand five hundred dollars there. Money doesn't grow on trees, right? That's what everybody's telling me since I was a kid. My point is, maybe there's some sort of health insurance that either the school has for students, you know, some sort of, you know, Kaiser or Outta Bates or, you know, I just, I just don't know if even the parents, some parents have health insurance for their kids through their job to where there's maybe a therapist that they can get through either, you know, private, not private, but you know, their family, primary care physician, you know, their, their family doctor. You know, they could talk to their primary care physician and they could recommend to a psychologist or a psychiatrist or even a therapist for the kids. I know mental health is really tough, but just, yeah, I would say approve it too. You gotta obviously do something. So I'll just, you know, just want to keep in mind that maybe there's personal insurance. And also I think it's a good idea to where if we could talk to the city, because the city is supposed to have some sort of mental health program. I mean, even just for homeless people like Berkeley Mental Health and whatnot. But the city needs to take charge and have some sort of mental health program for Albany residents. I got you. Thanks.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
I appreciate those comments. I don't know if there's anything to respond to in there. So we're still open to other board questions or, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I think I wasn't clear, maybe for the public, what occupational therapy is. And that very thoughtful question brought that up for me. So we, in our assessments, we are looking to evaluate a variety of issues. And this particular review is for an occupational therapist. An occupational therapist would be specifically looking to evaluate students who have, present with a variety of issues. That could be fine motor issues, that could be gross motor issues, that could be sensory integration issues. So it is a specific type of evaluative therapy that is before the board and the public today. So thank you for that thoughtful question because I think when we hear the word therapist, we sort of all go to mental health. And this is a request for someone to do a very specialized kind of assessment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that explanation. Any other board questions or emotions? I don't know about you guys, but it sounds like my house is about to blow down. It's distracting me a little bit, but.
I move that we approve the, oh, sorry.
No, 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 go, 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 go. I'll second you.
Excellent. I move that we approve the master contract between Albany Unified School District and Three Chords Incorporated, DBA Therapy Travelers and Therapy Travelers, I will see.
And I'll second. Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
Trustee Duran?
Yes.
Vice President Dos?
Yeah.
President Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
And trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The master contract passes unanimously. So we move to item thirteen dash four, Board of Education Appointments to the City of Albany's Advisory Bodies, to the City Council. So this is, the school district gets seats on some of the city council's advisory bodies and committees. And we get applications from the city after they have made their own appointment. So I, I believe most of, most of the city council members have already chosen their appointees. So all of the applications that we got are folks that, that we can use to fill our seats. And Julie has created a spreadsheet for us to do that. I can explain that process, but first I should ask if anybody has questions about the commissions or the process by which we get applications or anything else before we get to the sheet with the candidates. Yes, trustee Duran?
I have a sort of a basic question about the process. So this is the, the City of Albany wanting to involve the school district in selecting people for their committees. And my question is, 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 so are they interested in, are looking at parents in particular? Or, you know, folks that we deal mostly with? And, and I was thinking that certainly, and I know Ms. Mala, she has really worked on this about civic engagement and, and students being able to be recognized for that. And I'm wondering if in fact, the city is kind of turning to us and saying, well, you know, what are, what, what do you have to offer us? I'm thinking that we might have a whole pool of students that might be interested in participating on these city committees, which would be a great connection for our future voters and, and the kinds of experiences that they could use being on, on these city commissions or committees. So I don't know if Ms. Mala has any opinion about that. I don't mean to put her on the spot, but whether she, she has any thought about that before we go and look at the adults that, the list that we've been given.
Yeah, thank you. So we did publicize it to the high school student body that these appointments were happening probably back in December or November. And I don't think there are any students but on this list, but also the City of Albany will be appointing a, another member to the policing task force in the next few days. So we're, we're trying to republicize the opportunity to students.
So I can answer the first, sort of the first part of your question about, because I asked the city council the same thing, whether they are particularly interested in students. So for each of the committees on which we have a seat, the city council has gone through a process where they identify what they want the committee to be made up of. And, you know, have chosen this set of committees to give the school district seats, including most recently expanding the Social and Economic Justice Commission to include one person appointed by the school board. Their intention is not necessarily that this be a student, but to give the district a chance to appoint someone that we think will have the interest of the district in mind and maybe reflect some of our priorities. So I think it's not just about giving students the opportunity to participate, but it's also about giving the district the opportunity to, for example, on the parks commission, you know, we have interests in how the parks might be used by students or how, how we might want that, the goals of the district reflected in that commission. So I think the purpose is both to think about, you know, student engagement, but also to think about making, you know, this person then sort of represents the interests of the district on this city commission. And there are some cases where students did apply and were appointed by council members, which is why they didn't end up in our list. So I know that the Social and Economic Justice Commission has a student who's already been appointed. But I don't think any of the applicants now are students. But it sounds like there was an effort made to encourage students to submit applications to the city. Are there any other questions about the process? Or the role that any of these particular committees play? If not, I think it would be helpful to see the sheet that you made, Julie. And the process that we followed last time was we just went through the, the roll call and each person nominated the number of names that were allowed to fill, depending on how many openings the school district has. So we can go through that and, and then we can figure out if we need to do a second round to break any ties. And we could do one committee at a time. All right. Any questions? Oh, actually, we should take public comment before we start this action process. So we have one public commenter on this item, Mr. Pinguolo.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Well, this is me right here. I've, I, I've applied to be the seventh seat on the Social and Economic Justice Commission. Just want to let everybody here know that I believe I am one of those people you might be choosing from. And I just want to let everybody know. I really love the Albany Unified School District and I, I know a lot about it. You know, Ms. Ritchie was one of my teachers and, you know, I love your, I love your mission and vision statement. You know, it reads, "The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens." You know, that's exactly what, what I'm doing. You know, I, I, I'm being a productive citizen in the community. And I just want to thank Albany School District for creating me. You know, I, I'm a product of what Albany Unified School District can do. Yes, I, I was in Ms. Ritchie's math B class. And it just wasn't working for me. Math was, they wanted to schedule it first period. And I can't do math first thing in the morning. My brain's not warmed up yet. So I was having a little tough time with trigonometry, you know, so. I, I just want to just let you know that I'm doing my best in the city of Albany. I'm doing everything I can to collaborate. You know, I'm trying to get in touch with Albany Community Media Access, Albany's Channel Thirty Three TV, to get involved with Unified School District. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinguolo. So we can go back to our sheet. And let's follow our, so we have one appointee to make on the arts committee. Their purpose is to advise the city council on cultural and artistic matters. And let's use our roll call. What's the word I'm looking for? Rotation. So each trustee can nominate one person.
So this one would start with Vice President Dos?
Maria Yates.
President Hinckley?
Emily Bergman.
Trustee Boyd?
I was actually going to nominate Maria Yates as well. How does that work?
I'll just put your name next to it. Thank you. Okay. Trustee Davidson?
Can I have one second? Sorry.
We are going to get on some roads like that.
Emily Bergman.
Trustee Duran?
Before I say, I, I just want to say how difficult a process this is. Just reading, you know, the paragraphs from all these folks. There are so many great people interested. And I'm hoping that if they don't become part of these committees, that they're going to help us out in the schools. Because some of them have so many great skills. So saying that, I know I have to choose one or two people. So I think I'm going to go with Sophia Shway.
And I apologize, I missed Student Board Member Mala.
I was going to do Ms. Bergman and also Leo is here now.
Okay. Student Board Member Corso Clark?
Hello, I'm sorry for being late. We had a mock child competition, but I was going to nominate Ms. Maria Yates.
Uh, great. We have a tie. I will note that Maria Yates also is an applicant for the Community Media Access Committee. So I'm wondering if we should do that set of nominations before we break the tie on the arts committee. Can I get a thumbs up from the people I can see? Okay. So let's go through the Community Media Access Committee nominations and then we'll come back.
President Hinckley, do you want me to start with the next person in line for the roll call or just continue where we were?
Like, um. I guess, what, if you could do the rotation again, just so that I'm not always first.
Yeah, okay. Actually, you are first in this one.
Okay. And so for this committee, we have two spots. So my nominations were Julian Lewis and Maria Yates.
Let's do this. I'm going to change this to nominations. Okay. And the next is trustee Boyd?
Um, I was also going to nominate Julian Lewis and Maria Yates.
Trustee Davidson?
I was going to nominate Julian Lewis and Ross Stapleton.
Sorry. Trustee Duran?
Julian Lewis and Ross Stapleton. Julian Lewis and Ross Stapleton Gray.
Vice President Dos.
Julian Lewis and Maria Yates.
Student Board Member Malah.
Julian Lewis and Maria Yates.
And Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Maria Yates and Ross Stapleton Gray.
Does that look right?
Yep. That's the whole roll call? I'm not counting well. All right, so the, the two seats would be filled by Julian Lewis and Maria Yates for the Community Media Access Committee. So if we go back to the Arts Committee, I would, I would open it up to the question of whether we want to, whether people want to stick with their original nomination, given that we are appointing Maria Yates to another committee. Otherwise, I'm going to ask Trustee Duran to break our tie.
You're not waiting for me, are you, President Hinckley?
I'm waiting either for you or for one of the three members who nominated Ms. Yates.
I wish it were possible to know whether Ms. Yates is interested in serving on two different committees simultaneously. But I don't think there's any way to obtain that knowledge right now. Just sharing what I'm grappling with here.
Of course. Otherwise, we will just do a roll call vote between the nominees with the two highest numbers. So we would do a roll call between Emily Bergman and Maria Yates. So it looks like we'll need to do that mission.
Okay.
So first we'll do it all in favor of, of appointing Emily Bergman. And then we'll do all in favor of Maria Yates.
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
No for Emily Bergman.
Student Board Member Malah.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
No.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Duran?
No.
Vice President Dos.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Miss Shen. The clarification is that for this committee, I would, I would vote for Emile Bergman, Emily Bergman.
That would be a, that would be a yes vote because we're, that's what we're.
Okay. Thank you. I've changed that on the record. Thank you. Okay. Vice President Dos. Vice President Dos.
I think we, I think his house blew down before mine did. He's off the Zoom, so.
Okay, President Hinckley.
We'll go through and see if he comes back. Yes. And he's back.
Vice President Dos. You were last on the roll call vote for Emily Bergman on the Arts Committee.
Oh, no.
Thank you.
So was that, can you read the final count?
Yes, I have three in favor, two noes. And then the Student Board Member Advisory Votes, one yes, one no.
Okay, so Emily Bergman will be the appointee to the Arts Committee. And then we will move to Parks, Recreation and Open Space.
Student.
And we get two nominations.
Would you like me to start with the Student Board Members?
Sure.
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Sorry, I'm still pulling up all the materials for this. Would you come back to me?
Sure. Student Board Member Malah.
Angela Armandares and Ben Noble.
Student Board Member, more, excuse me, Student Board Member Corzo Clark. Would you like me to come back to you?
No, I've got it. Ben Noble and Peter Mass.
Trustee Davidson. Angela Armandares and Julia Price. Trustee Duran.
Angela Armandaris and Ben Noble.
Vice President Dos.
Angela and Ben.
You're muted.
President Hinckley.
Angela Armandaris and Julia Price.
And Trustee Boyd.
Angela Armandaris and Julia Price.
Great, so we have unanimous, almost, support for Angela Armandaris. And then for Ben Noble, we have, whoops, two board members and two student trustees. And for Julia Price, we have three board members. I know that student board members are advisory votes, although in this case, we are representing, well, we are looking for student support for, looking to reflect student interest in these committees. So, but our bylaws indicate that the board, sitting board members take precedence. So we have a 3-2 vote in support of Julia Price. So we move to the Social and Economic Justice Commission.
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Christine Wenrich.
Student Board Member Malah.
Carl Wilson.
Trustee Duran.
Ron Rosenbaum.
Vice President Dos.
Jeremiah Panguelo.
Trustee, excuse me, President Hinckley.
Christine Wenrich.
Trustee Boyd.
Kristin Mahoney.
And Trustee Davidson.
Jeremiah Panguelo.
Okay, that's everyone.
Sorry, there is something happening to my front yard with the wind. So we have a tie for two, or actually, we have one nominee has received votes from two board members. Jeremiah Garrett Panguelo. And no other nominee has a vote from two sitting board members. So that is our appointment for City of Albany's advisory bodies. We do need a motion to approve all of these appointments. I don't, and maybe that, just read for the record, I don't know if there's an easy way for you to show that, Julie. Maybe I'll make the motion since I can see the whole sheet. So I will move that we approve the city appointments to the following city advisory committees. For the Arts Committee, we are appointing Emily Bergman. For the Community Access, Community Media Access Committee, Julian Lewis and Maria Yates for Parks, Recreation and Open Space. Angela Armandaris and Julia Price. And for the Social and Economic Justice Commission, Jeremiah Garrett Panguelo. So I need a second.
I'll second that.
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Malah.
Yes.
Vice President Dos. Vice President Dos. I'll come back to him. President Hinckley.
Yeah.
Trustee Boyd. Trustee Boyd.
Yeah, I think she's on her way back in. I think the wind and the weather is messing with people's internet and stuff, so. I'm, I'm also back because I think.
We got our. Yeah, so we missed, actually, Vice President Dos, we missed your vote.
Yes, for me. And Trustee Boyd, oh, she's back. She just, she was coming back.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd, how would you like to vote for this, on this motion?
Hi, I'm sorry, I got kicked off because I lost power and I'm using my phone as a hotspot. Who are we voting between?
We're just voting to approve the whole set of appointments.
Oh, so I missed the social economic justice thing. Okay, yes.
But you did vote for that, right?
Yes. I thought, oh, we didn't have to tie break. We're just good to go. Okay.
Right, yeah, we didn't have to tie break.
Okay, yes.
Okay, next is Vice Pres, excuse me, Trustee Duran.
A yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes, I think I already voted.
I lost track, I'm sorry. Is there anyone I missed?
It's okay.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's everyone.
Great, so we have unanimous approval of our appointments. And we will move to the item 13-5, Independent Contractor Agreement between AUSB and IMAG Corp. For the design of a replacement of HVAC ventilation system at Cornell.
Great, I will turn this over to our CBO, Jackie Kim.
Thank you, springtime and wares. This is the item that our director of facilities prepared. And we also have one bar also, our project manager this evening with us. So we are ready to go.
Good evening, President Hinckley, board members, community and administrators. This evening, we're asking the board to approve an independent contractor agreement between the district and IMAG Corporation for the design of a replacement HVAC slash ventilation system for Cornell Elementary School. Before I go into the background information, I, I need to make aware that we have discovered an error on the district contract, the total, and the IMAG Corporation proposal total. Those both match and are accurate. On the backup information, the total is a different figure and it is not accurate. It needs to be the same as the contract total and the IMAG proposal total. I just wanted to bring that to your attention before I went further.
Thank you. Can you just state what the total is for the, for the record?
The total on the contract, the total line, the proposal is 124, 100. And that, those are accurate.
Great, thank you.
We recently did a, of the ventilation system at Cornell Elementary, and I want to bring out some of the history there. There has been concern with the ventilation HVAC to cool the classrooms for quite some time. And the reason is that building, the main building at Cornell, is the oldest building in the district. It was built in 1949. And when it was built, it was built to cold at that time. At that time, ventilation consisted and it was considered adequate, that being operable windows on. Now that we are experiencing global warming, there are a lot more warmer days. Now with the ventilation needs in the, in the event of a virus, such as what we're experiencing now, The study revealed that the current system is different. And so with that, there was, in the year two thousand, there were some upgrades. Basically, heating units were installed and some of them provided minimal ventilation. So we asked, after that study, we asked IMAG to present a, submit a proposal to provide the design and be involved in the construction administration of the installation of HVAC slash ventilation units. HVAC would be to provide adequate cooling to the building. And the ventilation would be to code to be able to provide good ventilation for, to bring outside air in. The interesting part about this project is that recently, due to the current pandemic situation, the state of California passed AB eight forty-one. And it would provide one hundred percent financing of this project. With that, and that was on the information that we initially received, we were able to calculate that we would be submitting a funding application in April of twenty twenty-one. And that funding approvals would be in May of twenty twenty-one. There has since been a change, recently, in fact, this last past Friday, more information as far as qualifying criteria came out. And it was stated that in year one of this program, schools with a high percentage of undeserved students would probably be receiving the bulk of this funding. But until we submit the application, we'd not know where we fall into. So it's, but I, we just wanted to mention it as well. An additional detail to this project is if approved, the district has approved the, or established the Environmental Action Plan Committee to, to develop an environmental action plan because the district is concerned as, as far as the the performance of all our facilities. That is, we are concerned about energy usage, environmental footprint and forth. And so if this project is approved, we, the environmental action plan is going to be, our plan is that they will be contributing to the design of the systems. One thing to note, too, also is the tricky part with the two costs is when the building was built in nineteen forty-nine, the structural capacity of the building was set and there were, there was, whatever was on the roof meant cold. Once we start designing a system, we might trigger additional costs. But that is something that we should be taking on. Because if we want to reduce costs, the type of system that we design or contribute to design would be important as well. So the Environmental Action Plan Committee will be assisting and helping determine what type of system is going to be installed. Currently, ideally, I should say, an all electric system would be ideal. But with that, we would need solar panels to be installed. And again, the Environmental Action Plan is looking into those projects and seeking funding. So this is going to be a very exciting project because hopefully, we can be able to include those systems as well. So that it provides safe, adequate and efficient HVAC and ventilation to the, to the buildings. Any questions?
Board, this is your chance to ask questions about the contract or the, the process that the contract's going to oversee.
President Hinckley?
Yeah, sorry, I can't see everyone.
I know. Just decided to jump in. I had also asked this question earlier this week, but I was wondering if maybe Mr. Borrego could address it for the sake of the community, which is the contract is to be completed by twenty twenty-two. And I wanted to see if you could kind of talk about if, if the contractors can work while students are there.
Because of the type of construction, to be able to install these systems, the contractors are going to be throughout the building. So this is a project that would have to be done during the summer break when there are no students in, on campus.
And given that, how does that impact on the kind of proper ventilation, for example, that we want for our students, given that they will be back on campus? How does that impact on them?
Well, we also did a separate study or survey of the the classrooms with respect to bringing the students back for opening. That study takes into account the size of the room. And it calculates in the air changes per hour. And with that, we were able to determine how much supplemental filtration that we would have to provide. And with respect to bringing the students back, we have bought the units necessary to be able to provide adequate ventilation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Vice President Dos?
So I just want to make sure that I understand the timeline and things. This was, this is happening because we tried to have some things happen at Cornell, but realized that the ventilation system wasn't like up to par. So we needed to replace it. So if we're only able to put this into Cornell during the summer, then we won't be able to use that facility until then. So what, so what do we do with all that space that we can't use?
Okay, so the, are, is the campus able to accept the students upon reopening? The answer is yes. Because of a separate survey that we did to determine how much supplemental ventilation we needed to provide. And that's also per the county guidelines. And so we had determined how much supplemental ventilation is needed and have purchased those units. So the, the students are able to come back whenever reopening is said to be.
Oh, okay, so they'll be able to use the site and everything now. So, and then we're doing this just to make it, just to improve it and make it better. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and this is, and this is being funded by a stimulus package. So it's not coming out of any budget that we currently have.
Correct.
Thank you.
And just a clarifying point that we have been talking about ventilation at issues at Cornell, at least the whole time I've been on the board for the past couple of years, that teachers have raised because it's the one school that doesn't have a centralized system. So this isn't just because of what's happened recently, but you know, this came up when we had fires, it's come up when it's very hot. So it's great to finally be making some progress on this. Trustee Davidson?
Well, everyone knows that I feel very strongly about this one because I brought this to the board about a year ago. And so I'm really excited to see this moving forward. I raised some similar concerns as Trustee Dos, just to make sure that with the timeline, we're still able to bring students back to Cornell because we heard in the past that we weren't able to bring students to Cornell because the space wasn't suitable. And we've both been reassured that measures have been taken to make it safe. It might help all of us in the community just to see that secondary survey, just so that we know what, what was done and, and/or just have a link to how it meets the Alameda County Guidelines, if that's possible. And then the next thing that I'll just say, just out of what you said, Mr. Borrego, they've changed this now, so we're applying for it, but there's still a potential that it won't get covered. Are we still liable for this hundred and twenty-four thousand then, that we're paying upfront for this process? Or are, are we pretty assured that this is all going to be covered? And do we have the budget to get the proposal started if it doesn't end up being covered?
I'm going to ask for Jackie Kim's assistance. My understanding is, is contingent on approval of the funding for the, for the design of system as well as the installation of the system afterwards.
I believe we are in a lineup with the funding. It's just that we do not know when the funding is coming along. So that's the timeline that we will have to work on. But we are expecting the funding will come. As we had a high school fire alarm project, it was something that necessary and needed for our school site.
Any other board questions? We do have one public comment. All right, seeing no raised hands, Mr. Pinguelo will give our public comment.
I just want to say thank you so much. I'm so happy and I promise I won't let you down. I'm going to keep on doing my, and I'm not going to give up. You know, I'm here for the next, you know, fifty years in Albany. And, you know, thank you for letting me get this opportunity to work with the city and the community. Regarding the Cornell ventilation, yeah, I, of course, upgraded. Ventilation is actually the only thing that's going to help reopen our schools. Because it all comes down to a study of ventilation, so many feet per cubic meter. I know that's the reason why they can't open the swimming pool for the homeless shower program. It's all based on ventilation. There's just not enough ventilation to recirculate the air. So they can't allow people inside. So this is top priority. Of course, I hope none of the money, you know, you know, Mr. Dos, I, I hope it doesn't take one dollar away from the kids. I'm with you on that. And, yeah, it comes from the AB eight four one program. So you know, ventilation is the most important and it's going to, because this, the virus is mutating. And it's going to keep on mutating. I mean, there's strains from Africa now coming over across seas. And this virus is just getting worse, it seems. So it's going to mutate toward all ages of people, you know. I pray it doesn't get any worse. I hope it doesn't start going toward the children. But yeah, ventilation is number one. So, yeah, please, please get this ventilation thing going. Thank you so much, everybody.
We have a second public comment from Nicole Maderas.
Hi, this is Nick Maderas. I attended the workshop from the California Energy Commission last Friday where they announced the guidelines for application. It does not cover design services. And the initial applications are, as we've talked about, for low-income underserved communities. And the program does not, not only doesn't cover design services, it does not cover new systems. It covers improvements to existing systems. And the Energy Commission is quite clear on that. So I would recommend giving the opportunity to the Environmental Action Planning Committee to review this proposal prior to spending hundred to hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of community's money on this. And take a little more time to consider it before spending money on a design that cannot be funded under the current proposal.
Thank you. Could we get a response to that comment?
I'm going to hand it over to Juan Barroso, our District Construction Program Manager.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ben, for asking me to, to comment here. Yeah, let me respond to Mr. Maderas' comments. The CEC is developing the guidelines for the implementation of this program. On Friday, they did a webinar where they began to issue preliminary guidelines for comment. As Mr. Borrego had mentioned earlier, they are, they had set out that in the first round of funding, they, they would favor or give preference to schools in underserved communities. And additionally, they also indicated that they would give preference to the initial steps of addressing issues related to HVAC and ventilation, meaning assessments, some of the kind of initial preliminary work. And that the further projects, like replacements and larger upgrades, the timeline for those has not been established. So those preliminary guidelines were issued again as a draft for comment on Friday. There will be an update to those guidelines on March, sometime in March. And that, so the final guidelines are supposed, are due to be published April, April first. So what has been published is not a final guideline. It's the initial airing of the California Energy Commission's first draft for comment. So that's what I would offer in response.
I think what might be helpful is so that we can get a really clear picture of what, what are the options here for covering both this initial cost and also the cost ultimately of the system that we need to put in place? I think that to frame this as something that we would only do if we can get it for free is, is perhaps misleading, given the emphasis that we need to put on improving that system. So I guess I'm still confused about sort of what is the longer-term plan for funding this assessment? For example, if it turns out that it doesn't meet the, the ultimate criteria that are adopted in March or April? And then again, for pursuing funds to install the actual system? And where those funds would come from and what the process will be for identifying those or identifying opportunities? For example, to use some of the, the relief package funding that's maybe coming from the state budget? I, I think it would help us to have a bigger picture. And also to know what this, the urgency is of approving this contract tonight as opposed to giving an opportunity for some additional review by our committee.
Let me, Madam President, Hinckley, let me offer this. One company has great and deep expertise in these new initiatives that come out. And they have been right on target with all the reimbursement anticipation. target with all the reimbursement anticipations that we get throughout the year, most recently the reimbursement of our 1.2 reimbursement for our fire alarms at the high school. Their company reputation is unparalleled to none. And so I trust their research department and their anticipation. And so that's one, and I move and recommend this tonight with confidence. We do have a Plan B. Just in case the money doesn't come through and in terms of how we would secure funding for the HVAC system at Cornell that is much needed. I don't want to slow down this process because we want to be right in line to be in receipt of these potential fundings. And so I wanted to put that out there so that we don't miss the opportunity of having the opportunity to get these funding for the HVAC. And so I just wanted to remind people of Juan and his company and their reputation. And they have a department that stays on top of this and even in front of these criteria. So I want to put that out there.
And what is I can hold my question. Trustee Davidson?
It might be the same one, but can we have a few more details on what the Plan B is if we can't get the funding covered?
Yeah, I would rather do that in a update to the board and a staff report in terms of our Plan B if this doesn't come through. But the only way this is going to go through is if we get in line early, get our preliminary work done, which costs, and it's an investment to have this done. So if we don't get this, and I could put it in a Friday update, the funds that we would have to identify that are it's going to be in a form of reimbursement for another project that goes back into the general facility fund. And we can target that to set aside for the HVAC, which means other projects maybe have to hold on a little longer. But the HVAC at Cornell is a priority for us. Priority number one with our facilities.
And I'd like to add one more thing here is that this is for the first phase, which is the design. So if we don't have this approved and start the work, then we are not able to even apply for the funding because this is necessary for us to apply the funding. And then we will see where we are with the funding. So then we can have another option to look for it. But this is the first stage at least for us to do the step one.
And what we didn't want to do is have the board be confused with the comment of a proposed rollout and then we missed the opportunity. Again, Juan Company and its research department and their expertise and former lobbyists are the best in the business in California, and I trust them immensely. I just don't want us to miss out on the opportunity. Their record with us is unparalleled.
Trustee Duran.
I think the concern superintendent is that we're vote you want us to vote on something and we really don't have all the information. For example, what you just said that you could pull money from other projects. And to me, I go, well, what projects? I mean, what priority do we have for other projects? I understand you just said the one at Cornell is key. So what other projects might fall behind?
The only major project outside of the high school fire alarm system, which is a health and safety issue, which was a priority, came the HVAC. And so I would have to look at our revisit with our director of maintenance, our next big project. But we do anticipate some reimbursement fund, not guaranteed, but promising from that we applied for for other projects that when they do come in for facilities, we may be able to use that for for the HVAC at Cornell, which means that fund would be that money would be used for Cornell, but it could have been used for other potential projects because we would have been able to set it in a facilities budget for that purpose. But we will miss the opportunity if we don't line up in time and be one of the first ones in line because your position is based on when you apply. And that determine that will increase your opportunity to get it if you're in line at the initial start. So I'm saying that that I just don't want us to be too bogged down on the checks and balances and too detailed at the expense of missing an opportunity, given that Juan and his companies are not rookies. This is what they do for a living and they're very, very good at it. They're top and I would say best in the business here in California. So I just wanted to put that out. And this is review and discussion, not for a vote tonight. And so when we come back for review and action, we can bring back some additional information that the board requests. So that's a good thing.
Actually, this is a review and action item.
It's ooh. I stand corrected. Thank you for that.
So I think that begs the question of does this need to be approved tonight? That seemed to be the urgency. But I'll let also Vice President Doss ask his question.
How long did they did they give us to try and figure this out? I guess my question is they're saying that you have a certain amount of time to start the work so that you can apply to get paid back. Instead of you apply to see if you're going to get the money and then once you secure the money, then you start the work. It seems a little backwards than like how things usually work. You know, like if I get something, if I get something fixed on my house, I don't tell the person to start working on it and then go out and try and like find the money. I like check, make sure I have the money and then I hire the person to do the work. So I'm just it makes me a little nervous to do it backwards because even though I know Juan for a long time, he's awesome. He's not going to give us the money if this doesn't go through. Even you know, even though he's really awesome, he's not going to say, oh, it didn't work out. Let me just give you the 125,000. We're still going to be on the hook for it. So I'd like to see a more concrete Plan B before voting on this. And I know it's time sensitive, so if I get outvoted for one, I will politely accept it and move on. But being the fiscally responsible board member that I think I am, I'd like to at least hear how we would pay for it if this doesn't work out. Because the state just more times than not, they don't give districts enough money. They never give us too much. Thank you.
CBO, sorry, CBO Kim, are you able to answer some of?
Thank you for this time. So the first plan is what we had was initially have this design done so we are able to apply for the grant and funding. In worst scenario, let's say we don't get it for next three years or we don't get it in next two years. So that means when we don't have money, first money 124,000, we can use the interest from our bond fund. So that's something that we can take care of, right? It's not going to affect any other school project that's going on. At the site, we can use interest for now. But now completing the whole project, we don't have the money on hand. So that means this project can be delayed if we get funding two years later because we are not in a top line because of
Is it just me or did we lose CBO Kim?
We lost her.
So I'm going to actually take the public comment that we have because it's a member of our Environmental Action Planning Committee, Mr. Peterson, while we wait for Jackie to come back. I think the district office lost their power.
Yeah.
Going to make it difficult to keep going, but we'll try. So go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
Okay, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Nick Peterson. Yes, I'm on Environmental Action Plan Committee. I also sit on the City of Albany Climate Action Committee, so I really endorse and support this effort. One question I had that wasn't addressed is is the idea that the design has to be shovel ready and it totally worked out? Or do you just can you could you have a more? I mean, it sounded like in Ben's presentation, there's actually construction administration, which on this type of project could be quite a large amount of fee. Also, there would be final design and construction documents with, you know, going to the state architect reviews and all that. So what I'm wondering is could this be a more could it could this be a first phase of project, fund the first phase, which would be enough to go for the money from the state? Or do you need to have shovel ready?
If I could respond to that, because that is a conversation that we've gone through several times with Mr. Borrego and CBO Kim over the last few months. So we really started looking at the issue of the ventilation concerns at Cornell. Probably in the October, November timeframe. That was the initial scope of work that we asked IMEG to look at. That they did confirm that based on today's code requirements, the classrooms generally fall short of what would be required by today's code. Not by a lot, but they do fall short. And the thought process leading up to today was really trying to move this project forward on a timeframe that this work could be done this coming summer, summer of 2021. And so we're trying to balance that with the opportunity to secure some funding from this new program. And so as the regulations are being clarified, you know, we're learning more about what the application requirements are going to be and so forth, and what the timeframes are going to be. And so we saw this as doing the work, addressing the concerns at Cornell, we're a top priority and really looking to set this up to be able to be done this coming summer. So that is part of the urgency. The comments that we're hearing related to the the funding and the likelihood and the timeline for that part of it, I think are all completely valid and something that needs to be considered. So we're really trying to balance the urgency to get this work done because of the concerns and also trying to find a way to fund it that still supports that timeline for the summer. So Nick, that's kind of a long answer to how we got here and and the scope of work. The so the contract that I made proposal or the proposal is full design services, which we would look at various options for the system type. And also doing the construction documents and overseeing the construction. One of the things we have to consider is once the system is designed, we do have to submit that to the Division of State Architect, which is likely to take two to three months to give us an approval to proceed with construction. So that was one of the major pieces that we're trying to figure out and still set this up to be able to be done this summer. And not eliminate that as a possibility. If the funding isn't lining up with that, then you know, we have to recognize that too.
Yeah, so but that still begs the question. So you do need a shovel ready project? Fully designed and approved?
No, the you do not need a shovel ready project for the funding piece.
Okay.
We would need we would need a shovel ready project for the for, you know, for DSA to be able to do the work.
Right, right. So in that case, how much would it reduce the cost if you faced it? What I I'm trying to address Vice President Doss's concern that they're essentially giving you the money and if you don't get the funding, not only are they out the design, but then you won't even get any money to build it. So the whole point of racing to the summer to build it if you have no money. So you can still move ahead. What's the bare minimum you need to move ahead?
So the bare minimum would be significantly less. I don't know what that is at this point. But it would be, you know, a fraction, a small fraction of the proposed cost. And so if if the board decides to to wait on that submittal for funding or decides to wait on this proposal and we wait to submit for the funding, I think what it will do is that it will take this summer of 21 for construction kind of out of the picture pretty quickly.
No, no, I guess I'm sorry. I didn't state it right. So in order to have if usually you go through, you know, preliminary design, design development, you know, 50% construction docs. You know, whatever, could you launch out? Could you sign a begin a phase one contract? Start out on the process to do this in the summer? And then also, you know, with with the hope of preparing whatever documentation you needed to get the funding approved. What is that still $124,000? Or is it?
Yeah, it would be a lot less. My guess is that's $10,000 to $20,000. But if if we don't proceed with the design, then doing this work this summer is it would not be possible, in my opinion.
Can I get every question, point of clarification? Is this public comment or is this part of the open discussion around the item? I didn't notice it. I had a blackout until I've been gone and
Yeah.
We got power back. So I just wanted to get clarification. Is this an amended agenda item with multiple presenters or is the is this public comment?
Mr. Peterson is a member of our Environmental Action Plan Committee, so he was helping us to ask some additional questions. But I do think we need to return to the board discussion.
I think I mean my point is, is there a lesson that you can prove tonight that you'd feel comfortable with? That's all I want. Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Yeah, thank you. And so I guess I have a couple of thoughts. One is that, you know, clearly this is a really important project and we know that the air quality issues really do impact student learning. We know it's only going to, aside from the virus, it's going to be getting hotter and smokier every year. And we face these challenges with helping kids stay engaged when the building is not suitable. I think the board feels this is a priority, but it's a bit confusing what this sort of process is rolling out. So before I return it back to the board to see if someone wants to make a motion of some kind, I just want some real clarity about the urgency of of this being approved tonight versus our next board meeting. Is there? You know, I don't know if there's someone on the board who's willing to approve it as is, or if we could get just a very clear statement from Mr. Barroso or from the superintendent about you know, this is put on the agenda tonight as a review and action item. So clearly, there's a sense that we need to move forward quickly, but I think it would help people to understand the exact timeframe with some clarity.
I just want to say when you when we're dealing with the government, everything doesn't make sense. Sometimes you have to put up money and hope for the best. And generally, we can't make a promise that we would get the money. But our experience and with the government, when they roll out these opportunities have been really, really more of a hit than a miss. And but we do know in order to have the greatest opportunity, we have to move quickly so we can be one of the first ones in line to benefit from a long overdue HVAC system. That's why we hire experts who have research departments who stay on top of these things and stay ahead of it. And it's not like they don't come with a reputation and a a decade or plus so of doing this kind of work and getting these kind of reimbursements. We just saw that recently with the reimbursement of 1.2, I think it was, million dollars for the fire alarm system at the high school. And we had to go through a similar process. And, 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 and hoping we get the reimbursement and we did because it was promising. But we couldn't make the shot we didn't take and we took the shot because we knew it was a priority. And we did have a backup plan in a similar situation we are now and remaining fiscally responsible. And we thought our kids were worth the process and it helped us tremendously. And so again, we're not new to this rodeo. We've been on it quite a few times and been very fortunate to secure the monies that we went after. And we feel the same way about this process that's consistent with all the other process that we been in around these kinds of projects. So there is a sense of urgency. As the slower we go, it does reduce our chances of being in the, in the line where we can get the money. And so we're recommending that we move forward. This is not some kind of scam with the state. This is legitimate. This is how the state does it, different from how we do our personal finances. And that's why it's so puzzling for folks who are not familiar with this process. But we are very familiar with the process. And again, Juan companies are experts in this process. That's why they were hired way back when, when the district did a wonderful job of researching the best firms in California and Juan's firm came out tops because of this kind of work.
Great, thank you. And yes, one more question and then I think we need to call the question. Yes, trustee.
Um, I just, I guess I and probably the board and all the board would want some assurances, specifically meaning CBO Kim already mentioned it and superintendent, if you will second it, that one source of money that we can use is the interest that has accumulated from the bond measures. And that money is, is, at this point, has not been assigned or some of it. I, I, I remember asking that question too, and some of the money has obviously been assigned already. But there is money that can definitely be used. Is that correct? Specifically for Cornell HVAC if it doesn't work out with the state? Is that a, a correct from both of you? I mean, is that yes for both of you or is a clarification needed for us?
I would say yes for this initial contract, but the next steps, we will have to work on the funding, prosper funding, because the interest is little over $2 million. And we'll just have to see how much we can cover for each project so that I, I don't have the answer at this point.
So the, the answer to your question, trustee Duron, is that yes, we can use it to cover this contract, but we don't yet know whether we would, we would be able to use it to cover the actual system once it's designed. But it would cover what we're voting on tonight.
Correct.
So I'd like to see if we, if there's a motion on this contract. Yeah, any, any kind of motion? Yes, Vice President Dos.
Happy to make a motion. Can somebody pull up the, pull the contract back up? Okay. I moved that we approved the con, the independent contract agreement between Albany Unified School District and IMEG Court for the design of and replacement HVAC ventilation system for Cornell Elementary School. With the one amendment that we be, we be provided with a detailed Plan B and a Friday update to the board.
I second that.
Student Board Member Corso Clark?
Yes.
Student Board Member Malau?
Yes.
President Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Duran?
Yes.
Vice President Dos?
Yes.
So the contract passes unanimously and that was our last review and action item. I want to ask for two things from the board. First, I'd like to move, I'd like to switch the order of the items that are coming next. There are two review and discussion items, one of which I will not be able to do if the district power goes out again. The site redesign of the Marin Elementary School rebuild. I want to make sure we get, get to that one just in case. And the second thing is, I think we should make a extension to the meeting now. We were scheduled to end at 9:55. If we could extend for another hour to 10:45, then I think we can get through both of these items. So I'm going to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45.
I'll second. Student Board Member Corso Clark?
Yes.
Student Board Member Malau?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Duran?
Yes.
Vice President Dos?
Yes.
President Hinckley?
Yeah. Um, so we're gonna move to item 14-2, the site redesign of the Marin Elementary School. And this is a review and discussion.
Madam President Hinckley, this item is going to be passed over to our Chief Business Official, Jackie Kim, for introduction.
Okay. Sorry, so let me just arrange my desk after the power loss. This item is for the Marin redesign and now we are proposing a two phases. So the first phase will be the original design. And then the second phase will be the additional that we can actually, um, let's see, talk more about it. Let's see, Julie, can you go down a little bit further to the next page? So here is what the board approved in April 3, 2018. And these are all the construction funding that we have with our $95 million bonds. And you can see in the final column is the construction budget. And Marin Webid, the construction budget is a current sign of $24 million. So this is item that we are asking board, that we want to bring this as a two-phase and adding additional work on the second phase. So when you go further down, and I'm going to talk about money side. So now we are going to have Juan Barosso speaking about the program side, and we also have the principal Melissa Ford and we have some of the Marin community here this evening with us. Okay, so we can go further down, a little further. Thank you, Ms. Jean. A little further. Okay, so here is the recommendation for the board this evening. So the option that we are bringing this evening, the fourth phase two is depends on contingent on our funding application. There we are, um, we submitted the funding application for the seismic upgrade and we are going to, well, it's also not guaranteed, but this is another one of the funding like high school fire alarm system that we are hoping to receive this pretty soon by January 2022. And about $4 to $6 million. And this will be the work that we are going to use for phase two. So then we can have a proper school for our Marin community and Marin Webid for the, for our students. And I think Juan Barosso is here this evening with us, so maybe he can add additional program side of this construction. Let's see.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening once again. Thank you, CBO Kim. I want to provide a little bit of background and sort of kind of give a chronological narrative of how we got here, kind of where we are and what's being presented for your consideration or for your review and discussion this evening. So in, in the cover, in the board backup, we're presenting just overall background on the bond program for everyone's benefit who may not be completely familiar with the initial goals and priorities of, of the bond program. So we've provided a, a narrative on the previous projects, the middle school, high school and Ocean View, which the first two projects have been completed on schedule within budget. Ocean View is proceeding on budget and on schedule presently. As CBO Kim mentioned, we also are providing this matrix on page two, which summarizes the funding for each of the projects. Also, I've outlined the procurement process that the Marin team went through a little more than a year ago to advertise, solicit proposals to design and build this project. And it describes that process. And then maybe for today's discussion, more importantly, I've done a narrative of the design process, which began in about February of last year, about a year ago. And involved a stakeholder committee that was composed of staff, community members, members of the board who were on that subcommittee, met with the architects over the last few months and had more than 20 design meetings. That process led to an initial design which reached a milestone of substantial completion as far as a design in about August of last year and which was within the $24 million budget constraint that was set as the budget. Subsequent to that, the district and, and key stakeholders from the Marin community brought forward some thoughts and ideas of maybe relooking at the site layout and asked that the design team go back and produce some additional designs that would maximize the play areas on that small site and also provide the best sightlines for supervision and safety of the, the students and staff. The team did that, came back with several more options, which were then presented to the stakeholder group. And the stakeholder group expressed a strong consensus and a preference for what we're calling option three in this presentation. And there's some of the graphic exhibits that are attached, which you can refer to. When the design build team, which is Alton Construction and LCA Architects, brought these revised layouts forward, they presented them and let the district know that going to option three would, could have the potential of extending the delivery schedule and would also add cost. The added cost coming primarily from the fact that, that two new classroom buildings are now on opposite sides or opposite ends of, of the site, which would require that the existing portables be removed and replaced with new construction. Also would require an extensive amount of site work to be added because previously, the previous design had the new buildings closer together, which meant less disruption of the site, shorter runs for utilities like electricity, storm, sewer, water and so forth. And additional elevators and so forth. So the key features that, that were important to the stakeholders were that the new design or the revised design really increases the play area by quite a bit. The architect did some measurements and determined that, that this design would increase the usable player by 21%, which was very important to the stakeholder group. I mentioned much improved sightlines, which would provide for better supervision. Get through the portables and replaces the portables with a new construction, which is which would be chips verified, meaning highly energy efficient, healthy buildings, excellent indoor air quality and so forth. And so if the project moves forward in this direction of option three, the proposal now consists of two phases. Phase one being construction of the two new buildings, which is shown in the exhibit, which essentially consists of 24, 24 new classrooms on two-story construction. And the minimum required site work and underground utilities to serve those buildings. So those buildings will be complete in, in phase one at a estimate of $24 million, which is the initial budget. Phase two then would consist of the remaining site work and site improvements on the play areas, most of the landscaping and so forth, just the site improvements. And also a seismic upgrade to the remaining pods. There would be three existing pods that would remain. And that cost is estimated slightly above $5 million. Now, that cost would be dependent on timing, meaning that if that work can proceed concurrently with phase one, that cost would be, you know, the $5 million figure that was proposed. If that work is, is delayed by a year or two, then that cost would likely go up just due to escalation costs and other mobilization costs. As I said, the stakeholder group expressed a strong preference for option three. And to reiterate, the strategy, potential strategy around the funding is that the district recently submitted a funding application to the state, which was accepted last week, which included some concurrence documents from the Division of State Architect. It included cost estimates and it included a lot of documentation. And that application is now under review. We would expect that that timeline would take a couple of months. take a couple of months and we would get either an approval or comments or request for additional information. And that by July, June or July of this year, the district would have a final approval letter that would stipulate the amount of funding that would be approved. The application that went in was for a funding request slightly under $7 million. And in my experience in working with this program, the state doesn't always approve the total amount that is requested. They will review the application, the cost estimates, and they might say, you know, we specific item, we we think this should not be part of the costs. And so that's where the four to six million dollar figure comes from, just from experience that the state will approve a slightly lower amount at the end of the day. The program that that the fund, this funding program is considered a life safety program. And what's important about that is that once the district receives an approval letter, this disbursement of funds goes to the very front of the line. This is the same program that we applied for the fire alarm replacement. And once that was approved, that one also went to the front of the line. This application would be on the on a similar cycle, which means that the district would know of the approval if the project is approved, June or July of this year. And then that would be funded by the state's fall bond sale, which typically happens in about October. And usually about 90 days after that, the district would have the funds in your account. I believe for the fire alarm project, the funds came in maybe in the early January timeframe. So so we would be in the same cycle for 2021. And that's where we're estimating that that the funds would be received in about January of 2022 or about a year from now. The likelihood of receiving funding for this application, I think it has a high likelihood of approval because we've gone through a lot of justifications and studies and documentation. And the key, the key part of the application is having DSA's concurrents letter where they're essentially agreeing that the proposed work and the costs are reasonable. So we we received that a couple of weeks ago, submitted the project last week for approval. And should the funding be approved and proceed on the expected timeline, then phase two could proceed concurrently with phase one, and there would be no extension to the schedule, and it would not be, you know, a separate phase of work. So so that would be the scenario. If the funding is approved, if if for some reason the funding is not approved, then we the plan would be to perform the seismic work on the three remaining pods and to do that within the existing overall project budget, assuming that no additional monies would be added to the budget. So so that is essentially the key points of the proposal. And that is what the board is being asked to review and discuss today and provide feedback.
Great, thank you. Can I just ask a clarifying question, which is, so whether ultimately the group has come up with a new design proposal, which will be implemented either in part if we don't get the money or entirely if we do get the money. And you've already submitted the application for the funding. So could you just describe what exactly the board's role is? What it is we need to approve? I know this is not an action item tonight, but will this? What kind of feedback are you looking for? And what would you be bringing back to us as an action item, if anything, in the future?
As an action item at our next board meeting, this design would come as this, the design that was just described would come back as a action item at our next meeting, and we would need the board to approve it in order to have the green light to pursue it.
The design itself?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could clarify that just just a little bit more, the the next step, should the board decide to proceed in this direction, the next step from a logistics and contractual point of view would be that we would then direct the architect to to design this new concept. We would have to produce a new set of design documents for submitted to DSA. That would include meeting with the stakeholder group again to verify the design. We've gone through that process once, I think, with great participation and and a lot of input from the stakeholders. We would do a lot of that again with this new design because the buildings will be slightly different. They're not going to be, they're not exactly the same building that was previously designed. So there would be a stakeholder process as part of this new design effort. So so that's the the next step, moving forward in that direction to be able to submit to DSA for approval. The step right behind that would be then, once we have DSA approval for this new design, another, a second item would come back to the board to authorize proceeding with construction. The board has to approve that after having DSA approval. That would be with the phase one, meaning construction of the two new buildings. And at a future date, we would come back with the same basic request for the phase two project, once we know the status of the funding and the timing of the funding.
Great, thank you. Board, do you have questions or comments? Oh, yeah, trustee Duran.
Thanks. I wanted to see if, I mean, we have so many people here from Marin. I'm wondering if we could hear from them in terms of, I'm not sure. I'm assuming all their perspectives are yes, go for it. But I'm wondering if they want to kind of convince us or or give us their opinion about this new design.
Trustee Duran, thank you so much for asking. We always have lots to say about our school and about this process. And I want to thank Mr. Barroso for summarizing the process for us so well. I want to go back just a little bit in history to the pre-design phase before this project was started with Mr. Barroso and Alton and LCA, which takes us back to when Director Ritchie was principal at Marin and Casey Daniel, who is here tonight with us, was on the original design team in 2014. At that time, there were some priorities that were developed about what we wanted in a school. There was lengthy discussions. I was in a part of the design team at that time, but Director Ritchie left me a lovely, we've talked quite a bit and we've gone through. She left me the files of of the original design and the priorities of that project we have maintained as a staff consistently to this day. Our priorities have, of course, been new and updated classrooms for our students. And it has always been preserving sightlines and increasing playground space for our kids to play. So when we started the design, design phase of this second round with Mr. Barroso and Alton and LCA, it was made very clear that there was not enough money in the budget to go with the original design that Director Ritchie and Ms. Daniel and the rest of the team created for us back in 2014. And so we did the best we could to come up with a project that fit within the $24 million budget. But with these, the new possibility of additional funding being secured, I'm elated that we are able to go back to what was originally established as part of as a design that works with our site and that works with our with our school and the way that we operate and move throughout the campus during the day, and I'll let others speak to those pieces. But I just did want to say that this is a way in which, moving forward with this funding in this way, it enables us to go from having the whole plague, the the building all focused on the south side of campus. And it opens up the playground so that the building is all along the perimeter thereby thereby expanding our playground by 20%. And there's a lot of other benefits that that I could certainly talk about all night. But I think I want to hand it off to Ms. Daniel, since she was a part of that original team. So Casey, if you want to unmute and talk about your experience there, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Melissa. Yeah, I was on the original design team long ago, back when Marin School was slated to be the first school to have construction. And then that process kind of fell apart. The design that we have now, this new design, really does echo the design that we had way back then. We are keeping some of the pod buildings, which we weren't in that original design. But I think this design does increase the playground space by a substantial amount. And if anybody who's ever been to Marin School knows, our playgrounds are too small. It also allows for student flow throughout the day to be much easier than the original design that we had come up with, where the two buildings were on the south side of the campus. It improves our sightlines and our safety to be able to watch students as they are moving through campus. And it makes the process of dismissing students to recess and then having them come back to your classroom at the end of recess to be a much more smooth process with this new design. I think it's the best design that we could have come up with.
And I just want to echo both Casey and Melissa. Casey and I represent the teachers at Marin and all the teachers are in favor of this new design. I'm new to this design team just in the last couple of years. And this third option has eliminated this narrow corridor courtyard. And that narrow corridor courtyard that has now been eliminated is just great importance. And I want to, I don't want to exaggerate, but it really affects like teachers' job satisfaction to not to increase those sightlines and, you know, not to give students negative attention of things they cannot do and having to, you know, follow them, more teacher supervision, following them to get their jackets or their snack. And now that's completely eliminated with increased sightlines, increased student safety, those precious 10 minutes that teachers have for recess. If they don't have to walk around, you know, corners and these weird, you know, rectangles to get to the yard and they can, you know, safely show their students out to recess and follow them and everyone is safer. And then everyone enjoys those precious 10 minutes of recess, teachers and students. So that was a key point in our newest design and the importance really of of changing it.
Great, thank you.
And then Samara, do you have, we have one more comment, I believe. Yeah, if you don't mind.
No. I just, I'm new, I'm a new staff person at Marin, but I've been a parent there for a long time. And this new design with the building at the perimeter is going to be great for the community as well. I was thinking about more my role as a parent going in. I lived right down the street, so I often would take my kids to the Marin School on the weekends and to go play. And right now with the building in jutting out in the middle as it is, you, you know, there's a bunch of opportunities to get divided from your kids, especially if you have multiple kids that you're trying to watch. Of course, they want to go in opposite directions. And so you end up chasing each other around different hallways. And although the the design that we were needing to work with due to the budget constraints is different than what we currently have, it was going to have similar problems with that courtyard corridor that Stephanie was talking about and how it just has these opportunities for you to lose your sightline and not be able to to keep track of your kids. So even for, you know, somebody who's just enjoying the playground on the weekend, this is going to make it all easier and just a better, better school overall. And I think my feeling with the Marin School, you know, that that lot is never going to get any bigger. It is such a small square footage for that elementary school. And so maximizing the playground space to be highest degree possible should be a really high priority. And so this new design really does that. Thanks.
Great, thank you. It's really helpful to understanding the evolution of the design. And I assume you're all willing to answer questions too. So trustee Duran, did you want to ask a question too? Or anybody else?
I'll let others go first. I always go first because I hog it.
So while board members are thinking, we do have one public comment from Mr. Pinguello.
I thank you for my two minutes. I really appreciate it. You know, I I support whatever decision, you know, the school board, of course, wants to make. You know, I support you for sure. I'm just trying to figure out because there's two exhibits. There's exhibit A and exhibit B. And I clicked the links and exhibit B has two options, phase one and phase two, option three. They look a little different. I was just wanting to confirm exactly which one specifically you're referring to. And then also, you know, I was going to just suggest to run the run the plan by the fire department just to see if the fire department has any ideas or any suggestions on, you know, the quickest response time. You know, if there's an injury, you know, someone in the playground, that sort of thing, you know, is there room to add one extra fire hydrant? Or, you know, how long is it going to take to get, you know, a fire hose to this side of the building? I would just just want to run it by the fire department just to make sure, you know, they're cool with everything and at least get, you know, some of their input. That could be a good, good thing, at least to get support from the fire department. But yeah, I support, you know, I support all the teachers. I support all the students. I support everybody with what you know, because this is your, this is your home away from home. You know, and this is a big thing, and this is child's education. And so one other question I had was, how many students can each plan hold? You know, what's the current population and what's the projected population? And where would the evacuation area be? Obviously, the playground, but how many kids?
Great, thank you. So I would also just appreciate a clear statement of what I think I understand to be true, which is that the proposed redesign would look like phase one if we were not to get the funding that we applied for. And if we do, then it will look like phase two, but they essentially have a similar building footprint. So maybe someone can just also confirm that we do work with the fire department. But if there are any other responses to Mr. Pinguello's questions before we move on to the next public comment.
Sure, I'm happy to respond. I know that the fire department has been consulted. We've the, we've talked to them about their access point to the campus and how they would fight fires. And my understanding is they would, rather than coming onto campus, they would frighten from the perimeter of campus. So they have been consulted. I know that another one of Mr. Pinguello's questions was about how many students we currently hold and how many we are projected to hold. And right now we have a total of 512 students at Marin Elementary School. And the new design with the 24 classrooms would hold approximately, not quite 600. School. And the new design with the 24 classrooms would hold approximately, not quite 600. So definitely a little bit more. So I hope that helps.
Great, thank you. We have another public comment from Mr. McLeod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I've been on the Environmental Action Plan Committee as part of the design process from the beginning. I'm a community member and I'm also City of All Money Planning and Zoning Commissioner and a local architect. And I've heard the teachers' concerns all the way through about sightlines and supervision. That's been a constant theme for them. And I, you know, I thought we had worked through part of that at the beginning with the current approved design. But, you know, I think the more they they lived with it and saw it, I think they they realized that it really wasn't going to work for them. So I understand what they're talking about and where they're coming from. But it is a little bit of a risk here. I'm concerned about the potential of not getting enough money. And then what happens? Do you have the three pods that will really be pretty pretty not great quality if they're not able to be improved? If it's just seismic work, then they're not going to get improved according to the current plan. And I'm really concerned about the schedule. And I'm concerned about it in two phases and how usable the school yard and pods will be if there is a big delay between phases. There's going to be a huge impact on the site with excavation and demolition of pods. So the site will be pretty torn up in Phase One. So I just don't know what the kind of site provisions there will be for making it usable if there is a Phase Two. You know, I'm concerned about the budget, whether there are cost overruns. And there were other environmental concerns I had that were addressed in the earlier that we really haven't had time to vet or talk about in this current proposal, since it hasn't come back to us as part of our Environmental Action Plan Committee meeting. So it would be good for us as the Environmental Action Plan Committee to see this and discuss it a little further. So if we have that opportunity at some point, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So maybe Mr. Baroso, or I don't know, Principal Fuller, if you can answer the questions about the scheduling. And I think they're mostly related to the scheduling and how, what happens if this gets more delayed than we think? If we do get the funding for Phase?
So, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Juan. I was just going to say I was going to defer to you.
Okay, so maybe I can, I can provide an initial response to that. And I appreciate all the questions from Mr. McLeod. And all, I think we'd have an opportunity to present this concept to the Stakeholder Committee, the Environmental Action Plan, as it goes forward, to make sure that it is meeting all of the important criteria. In terms of the schedule, we've reviewed the overall schedule with with the builder. The initial, the initial schedule was beginning construction this summer with a completion date of October of 2022, to be ready for occupancy in January of 2023. That that schedule, because it did have a little bit of float at the end between October and January, we think is still a reasonable target. Of course, it is possible there could be delays, unforeseen delays like in any other project. But we don't feel that moving to this concept is going to compromise that schedule. And we reviewed that in detail with the builder. And as I explained earlier, if the funding is goes is approved and goes through the funding cycle as is it's expected it would, that the funding could be in hand January of 2022, which then would make Phase One and Phase Two concurrent. So Phase Two beginning in January of 2022 with a completion goal of October of 2022 is a reasonable schedule for that scope of work. So we don't see a big or, you know, significant risk in terms of schedule, because a little bit of luck, we had a little bit of float at the end of the completion for the Marin project. And so that's going to help us create a buffer on the schedule.
Great, thank you. Trustee Duran.
Everybody who spoke and has given us all the pluses, but I want to know, maybe not from the Marin people so much, but Mr. Baroso and and others about what is the downsides? I mean, why, what, what do we really need to be careful about because in in this consideration? Because it sounds like it's kind of a win-win. I mean, if we don't get the approval of the monies, well, we're going to stop and just complete the Phase One and and, you know, not proceed. So can you talk about the downsides of this? And I mean, the perils that we may face besides, besides the funding?
Juan, did you want to address?
Maybe there are none.
Trustee Duran specifically asked for the non-Marin folks. And I do understand why. I'm ready to talk about the positives, but I was going to defer to Juan, but it looks like he's off the call. I can be neutral and objective for sure, too, and do my best to point out the downsides of this as I see them, trustee Duran. If we don't get the funding for Phase Two, what it means is the three pods that are currently that have always been planned to stay as part of the plan, they will not receive any upgrades. So if we do get the funding, these three pods will be updated. However, they they'll be earthquake retrofitted, right, and made safe for students. They won't be prettied up, though. The library wouldn't get any additions. You know, they, you know, we've talked about the possibility of, you know, some new paint and that's about it, right? So there's some extensive work that was originally planned for the three pods to improve them. But we, the team prioritized the classrooms because it's because that's what's mainly used by the students and all of those buildings would be new. The other piece, the downside, to be perfectly objective of not, if we don't end up getting the funding and we proceed in this way, the wonderful ideas for improving the playground would have to be on hold, right? This would give us the building, it would give us the bones, it would give us a very functional, fabulous new building with lovely classrooms. But the kinds of additions that we were talking about to the playground wouldn't, like turf, we were talking about adding, we were talking about adding another play structure to an amphitheater, fabulous stuff, that would have to be put on hold if we did not receive the funding. But the, we would have a functional playground space, we would have basically wide open space, which we could definitely live with, some wide open spaces. So I hope that helps.
CBO Kim, were you wanting to say something, too?
Yes, and I believe Ms. Ford actually did mention what I wanted to say. So I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we do have two more public comments. I want to remind folks that this is a review and discussion item, so we are just giving guidance and feedback. We're not voting on whether to move this forward so we can make statements about what we'd like to see when it does come back to us. So our first commenter is Diana Hayden.
Okay, I just unmuted. Thank you, Sarah. I wanted to mention, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Okay. I wanted to mention on the downside, because that was specifically asked, that schedule is really important. And Juan gave you an outline of of how it might work. But we know from each of the four projects that have gone through the district that the schedules have been really, really tight. And that has caused issues, just like this design process did suffer somewhat from the expedited design that occurred last summer in order to get into DSA in September. So when we have an expedited design process, there is, there are difficulties that come from it. So when it comes back, I'd really encourage you to have a very specific schedule laid out so you can evaluate it and make sure it's reasonable. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And last public comment, Mr. McLeod.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to just bring up a couple of things. I mean, there are trade offs, there's always trade offs in design. And when you're changing a site plan, you gain some things and some things you lose. Putting more classrooms over on the Marin side, or generally they're on the noisier side, there's more traffic there, there's more air pollution from automobiles. Part of the strategies have been to naturally ventilate the classrooms, so that becomes somewhat of an issue if windows need to more or less stay closed on the Marin side. And then overall, between the two plans, the current approved plan and then the proposed Plan Three, the new plan has 24 classrooms versus the old plan with Chad 26. So you're losing two classrooms. And then they're also losing an art science room and a flex room. So there's some trade off there. You know, so you have to consider that, you know, in terms of value, what you're getting and potential impacts on enrollment. If enrollment increases later and you need more space, then you would be losing classroom. That's something to consider. And we really haven't had a time, enough time to look at the overall plan and other respects. So I can't really comment any further. But so that'll be it for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So Board, I'm going to ask for, I think, a sense of support for this idea and in specific feedback for what we'd like to see come back when it is on our action agenda items. So we had one suggestion, which was that when it comes back, it includes a schedule, perhaps for the two scenarios, so that we can understand sort of the monthly schedule for each of those two possibilities. Board, is there other clarification or additional information you'd like included when that comes back? And I'm reading the sense so far that this is a design that people are, or that the process by which this design was come up with by the staff and the committee is is something that we're supportive of. So if that, if that reading is incorrect, please clarify now so that staff can.
Oh, you're spot on for me, Sarah. You're, I really support the added outdoor space and this new design. And I, I like the classrooms along the outer edge. It makes the whole campus feel safer, in my opinion.
Trustee Duran?
I just wanted to say that I also am in support. But when it comes back to us again, if by then Marin folks will meet with everybody that might be have some concerns, like Mr. McCloyd and others, so that any issues can be really discussed more thoroughly, so that when it comes back to us, we could get that information that, you know, that pretty much addresses any and all concerns that that are out there. And that that's then presented to us at the next, at the next presentation.
Great. Any other direction? Yeah.
But clarification? Let me offer an alternative that we don't go out there and solicit input from individuals, but they be invited to the bigger committee to share and give input on their concerns and their appreciations. And that way, all the folks, that way, we don't go out and try to seek individuals. And I think that would meet trustee Duran's request. Is that pretty, is that okay for you, trustee Duran?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to make sure that it gets shared with the Environmental Action Committee. I'm forgetting what it new name is. It was originally the Sustainable Design Committee. So it was the body that we created to initially to give some feedback on these proposals. And there is a meeting between now and our next board meeting. So maybe one of the things you could bring back in the presentation subsequently is just a summary of those of that stakeholder meeting where you invite additional people and any other feedback that you've gathered in the meantime.
Got it. Thanks.
I can't tell if Juan is trying to say something or not.
My power went out, so I'm now just on my phone listening and was going to comment only if asked to.
Great. I think, I think we're all set. Board, is there any other direction? Yeah, Vice President Doss?
Just would like a little bit more information around the decision making to take away the two classrooms.
Great. Any other requests for information when it comes back to us? All right. Thank you so much for coming to share the new plan and talk about the process. These are exciting, but it takes a lot of hard work. So looking forward to hearing more in a few weeks about about this and getting a chance to hopefully get your ideal version funded. So thank you very much. And we'll cross our fingers. We have a lot of finger crossing to do over the next several months. And we're done with this item.
Thank you. Thanks, Board.
So we have eight more minutes of our meeting. So I am going to start our last item, which is 14-1, Resolution Number 20, 20-21-14 in support of Senate Bill 14. So we had a discrepancy in the agenda. So this is listed as a review and discussion item, so we can't vote on it tonight. So what I'd like to do is see if we can get the full discussion and then bring it back as a consent item at our next meeting. And this was brought to us by Student Board Member Leo Corzo Clark. So I'm going to let him start and then we'll go from there.
Great.
Leo, I don't know which, which part you want brought up first. Julie, is the screen share?
I think the backup will suffice at the moment. We don't need to go through all the bill language this summer and the backup is good. Awesome. Okay, thank you. So what this item is, is a resolution of support for California Senate Bill 14. This is in the state senate. And just a quick overview of Senate 14. So the bill is a bill that would further support student mental health. I think the title is Pupil Health, School Employee and Pupil Training, Excused Absences, and Youth Mental and Behavioral Health. And so the big three reforms in this bill is, one, there would be districts and local education agencies would be required to have at least 50% of school staff that work directly with students be trained and certified in youth mental and behavioral health. And this training would be sponsored and funded by the And this training would be sponsored and funded by the state. And furthermore, this would make the same sort of like mental health education available to students 10 through 12 if they voluntary, if they volunteer themselves to decide to go through this education, learn more about mental health. And then lastly, which I think is the most important part of the bill, is that it would also add, quote, "for the benefit of behavioral," or it would reform the education code to allow mental days to be taken off from school for mental health reasons, for those days to be classified as excused absences. So similar to how, let's say, if you're physically sick, if you have a cold, you can be absent from school and have it be an excused absence. This bill would change the state education code so that mental illnesses and mental health be given the same privilege as that. So yeah, this is, that's the summary of SB 14. And this is just a letter of support in that. If there's no more questions about the bill, then we can display the resolution and I'll read that out.
Just wanted to make one other note that someone, about the advantages to being able to use mental health as an excused absence is that it also enables us to track when students are using that as a reason to be absent, as an additional sort of measure for us engaging how students are doing, in addition to sort of removing any stigma around it and making it easier for students. It gives us some additional information.
Exactly. Thank you, Ms. Hinckley. Yeah, do we have the resolution? Perfect, okay. I'll just read this. It's a little long. There's a lot of statistics, but I thought they were relevant enough to include. So I'll just read it through. So whereas in Albany Unified School District, the mental health and well-being of students remains and will always be a top priority of the district. And whereas suicide remains the second leading cause of death for students ages 15 through 19 in the United States. And whereas 79% of children ages six through 17 with mental illnesses do not receive treatment. And whereas nearly 50% of students ages 14 and up with mental illnesses drop out of high school, which is the highest dropout rate for any disability group. And those are the main statistics that I wanted to be reflected in the meeting because I thought it was important to know. And next, we'll be skipping down sort of to the end, say, whereas students would benefit physically and academically from strong mental health support in the classroom. And whereas Senate Bill 14, sponsored by the California State Senator Anthony Portentino, would require that at least 50% of school employees be trained in mental health first aid, as well as formally change the state absence code to allow for mental health as an excused absence. And whereas Senate Bill 14, sponsored by California State Senator Anthony Portentino, would require the state of California to reimburse local education agencies and school districts for costs related to implementing the programs prescribed by SB 14. And whereas districts like Sacramento City Unified and Fresno City Unified have recently passed resolutions affirming their district's support for student mental health and for allowing excused absences for mental health. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Unified School District Board of Education urges the legislature to stand in support of student mental health and vote in favor of Senate Bill 14. And that the district calls on the California School Boards Association to publicly advocate for the passage of Senate Bill 14. And I won't read all these names, but have it also be resolved that the board directs the superintendent's office to transmit official copies of this resolution to all relevant appointed officials and elected officials. Thank you. And I'd also like to say that this isn't just like brought out of the blue. This is actually a sort of coordinated effort from students around the state. Like I said, Sacramento City Unified, my friend Isa is a student board member there. He recently passed this, as well as Poway Unified in Southern California. My friend Emily helped us get passed. My friend Brian just texted me like 15 minutes ago. He's the student board member for Alameda. And they just passed the same resolution, along with all of those districts, implementing mental health days as excused absences as a part of their education code. And so hopefully that's the next step that this board can adopt. But for now, we thought it would be, it's urgent that we show early support for this bill as more districts continue to do so. But yeah, that's all I have. If there are any questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. I can't see everybody. Trustee Duran?
Board Member Corso-Clark, I'd like to ask you two things. One is, when is it set to be presented in the senate for, to be passed? Or, you know, to go for a vote?
I'm not entirely sure. Currently, state legislators are still completing their slates for the year. So nothing has been introduced yet, since they're still finalizing their bill package. But I do know that typically this type of stuff would be voted on later in the year and then signed into law in around October or sometime in the fall. So it really depends. I couldn't tell you, but within the coming months and by, hopefully, the, any year or so. October, I think, is the.
My second question to you is, since you'll be leaving us, you'll be graduating. In June, I'm wondering if you are, have thought about, similar to Fresno and Sacramento, actually trying to push a resolution with, with our board, not, well, to have our own mental health days for, for our students here in Albany.
Yeah, completely. Like I said, my friends and I, the other SBMs, actually worked together. I'm the Director of Resources for the California Student Board Members Association. So a lot of the language in their resolutions, I actually wrote. And so I have that language ready to go. Audrey and I just thought that having this letter of support be passed sooner than later and sort of get ahead of what the possible lengthy discussion that, changing our code, our code to have mental health days included. My brain, and we didn't want this letter of support to be delayed. But that is the plan and it would probably, I'd probably bring it up. We would probably bring it up much sooner than, than June, probably within this winter or by the beginning of spring.
Other questions? So I'm going to sense a level of support for bringing this back on the consent calendar because we've read through it and heard an explanation. If you want more information about the bill, it's linked in the backup. It is a budget item, so it would also be part of the discussions around the school, around, sorry, the state budget. And so the opportunity to get additional funding for mental health training is, is huge. And I think there's a lot of concern right now about youth mental health.
And just, sorry, just add one more thing about what President Hinckley said about funding. So according to our state constitution, all like mandated programs have to be funded by the state. So the mental health training for teachers would entirely come from the state and would not be a burden to our local funds at all.
Madam Chair, President Hinckley, I think it's appropriate at this time to recognize student trustee Leo Corso-Clark for his leadership around something so meaningful and much needed here. And it's just a model of what students can do to make a big difference in our world. And I want to personally say and professionally say, thank you for your leadership around here. It's noticed and is much appreciated. So thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, Dr. Wells.
Agreed. And it's a lot more work than he makes it look like. So, great. So I'm excited for us to be able to officially approve that. And that concludes that item. So we will now discuss upcoming agenda items very quickly. I just wanted to share what's on our agenda for February 9, which is the AMS and AHS. Oh, sorry, there's a public comment, I think. Yes, from Mr. Pinguelo. Sorry, before we conclude the last item.
Thank you so much. What a great presentation you did there. I have a couple of questions about that. You know, if the student's going to take off the mental health day, hopefully, mental health resources could be connected to that person because obviously they're taking the day off for a serious reason. So hopefully, they get connected to some help. And just wondering, how many days per year is the state allowing for excused absences? And also, think of the transcript, you know, for college. I don't know if colleges are going to look at, oh, well, this person was off school for mental health issues. And then that might affect, you know, whether or not they get accepted into the college or not. I would hope that the mental health would almost be just the same kind of marking as just excused absence. And then the college doesn't know whether it was physical health or mental health. Because I don't want anybody being biased on, oh, wow, this kid missed 20 days for mental health. You know, they got issues or something. You know, why would we want to take them in our college? I just don't want that to affect, you know, going to college at all. So hopefully, hopefully, the colleges or hopefully, when there's an excused absence and it's marked on the transcript, it's not a different marking. You know, I would hope it's just the same as a physical sickness day to where the colleges can't see what's really going. I don't know. I don't know the best for that. I just wouldn't want someone not to get accepted to college because they had mental health excused absences. But a very good bill. I think it's a very good bill. It's obviously really good for everything. I'm so thankful that you're working on that and the students are working on that. I just don't want it to affect, you know, going to college. We have one of the great thing, I'm in support of it. I think the Social and Economic Justice Commission would support that too, if we can make any recommendation to council. Yeah, and I hope this school still gets money, even though there's an excuse, excused absence.
Thank you.
Could I, just to respond to those things? So in terms of students getting support, the Albany, our mental health department does have sort of preventative and like intervention data that they use. And this would just be added on to that. In terms of transcripts, I don't think absences are listed on transcripts, at least not on the ones that I sent to college. So I don't think that would be an issue. And yeah, I believe that's it. And like I said, this would, this would all be funded by the state. Thank you.
Right, and I can go ahead and confirm that attendance information is not included on the transcript. And to answer that question, currently, edcode allows for 10 excused absences, 10 a school year.
Great, thank you. So returning to our final topic of, what am I doing? Upcoming agenda items. On February 9, we have the AMS and AHS reopening proposals, an update on reopening before and after school, an update on the 21, 22 governor's budget proposal. And I believe this is the site design of Marin coming back to us. Are there any other items that have come up this evening or that board members want to add to the future agenda of issues then? Yes, Trustee Duran?
Two items. One is, and once, I don't know if it has to come through the board, but I certainly wanted it to, to be put in the agenda and for next time, if necessary. And that was regarding the cross-country team season at Albany High School. A parent had raised that concern with us and it's a timely issue. And I don't know if that's able to be resolved without a board decision. So I want to be sure that that's investigated. I know the superintendent had reached out, I think, to the principal at the high school. But I just want to be sure it's on the agenda if for any reason the board has to make the final approval of the season, of the participation. That's one item. And the second item was if we could have an opportunity for the two student board members to potentially present at our next meeting a student survey that came out of the Student Voice and Engagement Initiative. Survey was done with students from fourth grade through 12th grade regarding their priorities, about issues they might have with schools. And so, and what they might be interested in participating in to, to make improvements. So if that could be added, please, to the agenda.
Any other items? Great, seeing none. So I will add those to the mix. I think we could use Superintendent Wells, just a clarification in an update or by email about the first item, about what the board's role is in approving the resumption of other activities. You don't need to answer now, but yeah.
No, I was thinking about that for a Friday update. Most, most, most certainly. Thank you for that.
Great, thank you. So we are done with our agenda and it is 10:56. We almost made our extension time and we are adjourned. We will see everybody in two weeks.
Nice, thank you.